Hosts of the meeting and IRN IT staff will be the co-host. For tonight's study session, council members and panelists will be able to unmute themselves when recognized. Please mute yourself when you have finished speaking to prevent disruptions. This time I'll call the meeting to order. Our first agenda item is a presentation on the Maker Housing City Mortgage Rent Assistance Program. Will Community Development Director Jason Rogers please introduce the presentation?
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem and Honorable City Council. First, I'd like to welcome tonight Drew O'Connor and hopefully I don't butcher the last name Lakshmi Kolengode with Maker Housing Partners. Just a little bit of context before I turn over to Lakshmi and Drew. Obviously at our May 28th meeting, a special meeting and what was further supported by council on June 1st at a regular meeting, staff initiated a process, developed a mortgage and rental assistance fund program for the city. We had been brought forward a number of different resolutions between June 8th and June 22nd to be able to memorialize basic eligibility parameters and award criteria based on the identified vendor, which is before you tonight Maker Housing Partners, that will allow for a broad distribution of funds to our community in support of preventing eviction and or foreclosure on our residents. On August 6th, after the C was able to enter into an agreement, the mortgage and rental assistance program went live for Commerce City residents. And today's presentation is to be able to provide you as council, an update with the impact within the community. Things that will be outlined for your digestion is data on Commerce City residents, applications under review and those that are in the queue and after received amounts of dispersal of funding and the communication strategy to the community in regards to the program as well. With that being said, I will then hand it over to now Lakshmi and Mr. Drew O'Connor.
Hey Jason, this is slight hiccup. Drew has not yet received the link to join in and he's right now with me on the phone, but he can neither join the call through my idea. So if there's a way out quickly, he can hop in immediately.
Okay, I am looking to Rodney to see if there's any ability to help assist. We're still getting to be able to get you on, but Lakshmi, if you want to start and we'll be sharing, allowing Lakshmi to share her screen, we greatly appreciate it.
Can he get a presenter's link to him? Because the first half of the presentation is better that he speaks on that. So if he can quickly get a link, he can hop onto it. Or even the way to share audio, I can share screen somehow to him or something can be worked out. He's been trying to reach Rodney.
Mr. Prince, any way to assist?
Jason, I believe Rodney and Rick are working on it right now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dylan.
Just a moment.
Hey Drew, did you hear that? They just said Rodney's working on it. Yeah, thank you.
While they're working on that, let me give you a reminder, City Council. CML sent out a reminder of a meeting with Senator Gardner tomorrow morning at 8:30 in the morning. And there's a Zoom link that came from CML if you want to participate in that meeting.
All right, Lakshmi, it looks like we've sent Drew another link. Can you confirm that he got it?
Yeah, checking right now. Drew, did you get any a link right now?
I just did.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Hopefully this gets him in then.
Awesome, thank you so much. No problem. Thank you so much.
I'm in.
Oh yeah, awesome.
All right, so are we ready to go?
That's correct Drew, yes. Do you need me to share the presentation or will you be sharing it?
If you got the latest one that came about 12:30 PM, you can go ahead and share it. That'd be great.
All right, I'll do that now. Just let me know whenever you're ready for me to go to the next slide.
Excellent, thank you. Well, hello everyone. I guess, you know, we're all experiencing fun in Zoom land. These probably are all new challenges that you face as a city council and figuring out how to do this work together. My name's Drew O'Connor. I'm Deputy Director for Maker Housing Partners and we're very pleased to be in this really important partnership with you all to do everything that we can to help the community in its time of need. And so first, I'm just going to tell you a little bit about our organization before I dive into some of the background and details of the work we're doing together. Next slide, please. Great, so our mission is to disrupt generational poverty through socially conscious community development in Adams County. So I think as you all know, we're the housing authority of Adams County. We were founded in 1974. We have 15 affordable housing communities that we own and manage. We're in the process of purchasing another called Tuscana in Westminster along Sheridan Boulevard. We broke ground recently for another affordable housing community in unincorporated Adams County along Broadway and have others in the pipeline now. So we're an expanding affordable housing organization in Adams County. Next slide, please. And just so you know a bit about us, we've gone through a recent internal process and this is a relatively fresh set of core beliefs that we've developed as an organization. One Maker, One Culture just talks about how we're working together across all of our departments to achieve our mission. These next three I think are really important to the work that we're doing together. Our understanding is that poverty is systemic, that low income people are not to blame for poverty, but that poverty is a systemic issue in our society that has many historical roots. We believe in people, which refers to our belief in the assets and gifts of every individual that we are privileged to serve in the community. And that people really want to succeed and support their families. That's why we all kind of come in community together. And then everyone needs a home and this is fundamentally who we are. We believe that housing is something that everybody should have in our community. And then we're committed to diversity, inclusion and belonging and then keeping our community safe and sound. Next slide, please. So I wanted to talk a bit about some global things that impact what we're doing together in our work in rent and mortgage assistance. And so a little bit of on current context. Excellent. One thing that's pretty live right now is this CDC moratorium took us all by surprise. We didn't quite see this one coming. It was issued on September 4th, 2020. One of the key pieces of this is this notion of declaration form that every tenant that wishes to gain access to the moratorium must fill out and present to their landlord. And so we're doing our best right now to actually make that declaration form available to community members. And in particular, right now what we're doing is linking it to our rent and mortgage assistance process. So as people are signing up for rental assistance, we are letting them know about this declaration form via our website and we're actually now kind of building it into our response process for rental assistance. Also though, live right now with the CDC moratorium, as you all probably know, is a series of legal battles that are kind of being played out at multiple levels, at the local level, local district courts, at the state level, and then at the federal level. It's being challenged at the federal level right now. I think there's a plea for an injunction to just sort of not implement the moratorium right now legally here in Colorado at the district level. Because of the way that we're structured and more of a local control kind of approach, each district court is making its own decisions around how they're going to handle this moratorium. There are really two key issues in place, at least in my discussions with different folks in the legal community around this. And one is, when is the legal point of implementation of this moratorium? So does it only apply to people who fell into arrears after September 4th? Or does it apply to everybody who is already in arrears based on COVID impact prior to September 4th? And that's one legal question that's being sussed out. And then the other has to do with whether or not just the completion of this declaration form and presentation to a landlord is enough to enact the moratorium for that individual or whether or not a declaration form can actually be challenged in the courts. And so that's another thing that's getting figured out right now too. So there's a lot of uncertainty around this moratorium and how it's going to be implemented right now. But one thing that we're strategizing on is that if some, in some shape or form, this moratorium actually takes hold and lasts all the way to the end of the year, which is our hope, then that will, I think, put more pressure on landlords who may then become more interested in our landlord applications because our landlord application process, because they would be looking at a longer period of time where they would not be able to solve their delinquency or evict an individual. And so we're preparing right now to kind of beef up a little bit in our landlord application process with some additional staff so that we're ready to deal with hopefully some more applications for our landlord process. Next slide, please. So another thing that's going on right now and that we hope comes to pass is that there's some advocacy going on to try to get an extension on the Current Cares Act. And so obviously we're all under the gun to try to get this money spent before we have to send it back to the federal government, both to the county and then to the federal government. And I'm sure, you know, we all had our druthers, we would get all of these resources out into our community. And as you know, we're all doing our best to get a lot of money out into the community as quickly as we can. An extension would really help us a lot. And so there has been some local advocacy to our delegation, our legislative delegation. I know there's a, you know, a task force around housing stability in the COVID era that has formed in Adams County that sent a recent letter to Senators Gardner and Bennett to try to encourage them to work on an extension for the Cares Act. And so I don't know if you all were interested in engaging in something like that. I think I heard somebody mention there might be some outreach to Senator Gardner's office soon. This would be something I think would help us all if we had an extension to the Cares Act. Next slide, please. So now a bit more about the specific program we're all working on together. You know, when COVID happened and we began to kind of prepare ourselves and retool to be able to help the community in a bigger way, many of the various partners, you all, Adams County, Thornton, Westminster, Federal Heights, kind of came to us and said, hey, we know you have an operating rental and mortgage assistance program. Can, you know, can we, you know, pump some of our dollars through you all in order to do the rental and mortgage assistance? And we obviously really wanted to support in that way. One of the things that we asked all the communities to come together and do is to help us come to create one streamlined process with one streamlined set of eligibility criteria, which would help us on the backend so that we weren't implementing four or five different programs, but just one program. And so it was great to get the collaboration from all the jurisdictions to agree to that. We all kind of got together in the Zoom room and agreed on a common set of eligibility criteria and some other basic parameters for how we were going to do this. And we were able to move forward and it helped in doing that reduce our administrative burden so we could move faster. We launched our Cares Act version of this work on August 6th for Adams County and Commerce City. And then as the other jurisdictions made their monies, their Cares Act money available, they came on later in the month, more towards the end of August. Next slide, please. So prior to COVID, we had a very small rental assistance program, about 1.5 FTE in it. Mostly it was supported by TANF with a little bit of CDBG sprinkled in every once in a while. Really about $300,000 to $400,000 per year we were putting out into the community. And you know, most of the work was done through small group kind of interactions and then person-to-person case management. So it was a very, you know, almost sort of tactile approach to doing the work. We were, you know, engaging directly with people face-to-face in how we were doing it. Next slide. So now we're currently a nine FTE group of people working on the program and we are in the we added three new positions to get to that nine in August. And we're hiring three more contract positions now. Actually, we've got three people in the queue who we're interviewing. Hopefully this week or the beginning of next week. And these are just temporary but full-time positions to help us through the period of time that we're in right now. The way that we're running the program now is completely online with, so our application, we created, you know, in the month of, through the month of April, we created a web-based platform to do all the applications. Whereas before it had all been done through paper and face-to-face, now it's all web-based to be a socially distant approach and the TA support comes via email, phone, text instead of face-to-face interaction. And but add it to the application process, we have our resource navigators working with folks as they apply to help navigate them to other resources that they may be looking for in addition to rental assistance. Next slide. So our three big strategies right now, and again, these from the very beginning, you know, back in April, you know, way back in April, the county and the Adams County Foundation in partnership with the county commissioners granted us $300,000 immediately at that moment to do some emergency rental and mortgage assistance at that point. And so that started with our tenant application process, which we designed as a web-based approach. As the Cares Act money was coming down, we realized that we needed more than just one strategy, that we were getting pretty slammed on the tenant side and we just couldn't process them quickly enough. And we came up with the idea of developing a landlord application where landlords could apply for all of their delinquency at once. And so for roughly the same amount of administrative burden, we could be helping five, six, 10, maybe 15 tenants at a time through a landlord application as opposed to just one tenant at a time. So this is a part of how we're able to pick up our pace and hopefully get to the numbers that we all want to get to. And then the other part of our process that we created, a new strategy that just kicked off in August was the Rapid Settlement Program with Colorado Legal Services where we've set aside a chunk of money that they are able to access for folks that are already threatened with eviction and in that process. And so that they can kind of help tenant and landlord settle a case, you know, at the Zoom room court steps and keep that individual out of eviction. So that process has been working pretty well and I believe it's helped at least one family in Commerce City and several others in unincorporated in Westminster so far. Next slide, please. So we're also leveraging other resources as we use these care funds. As I mentioned, we have the county COVID fund that we got back in mid-April. We've only got a little bit of that money left. It's almost totally gone. We just got another TANF grant from Adams County, which will be about $450,000 for this this grant year, which basically starts mid-September and goes forward from there. What we've been trying to do is use some of these other funds to pay one month forward for everyone that comes through our queue. Because as you may know, in relationship to the Cares Act money, the Cares Act funds can only cover delinquency. It can't pay anything forward. And so we're trying to find some ways that we can also support tenants as they're coming through for the next month forward because it's likely that they're also struggling with the next month too. So we're kind of running out of resources a little bit for that right now. We haven't gotten our next TANF grant in yet. And the COVID money is almost out, but when possible, we're trying to pay one month forward. Next slide, please. So I just want to touch on a little bit about how we've been getting the word out about the program. Next slide. So everything that we're doing is in English and Spanish. All of our, all of our prints, the other forums that I'm about to talk about in terms of outreach has all been in English and Spanish. All of our community-facing resource navigators that are kind of our frontline on the intake process with all the applications who are providing the technical assistance for folks and helping them walk through the web-based application are all bilingual. And so we're doing as much as we can to both outreach to all of our community members, our English and Spanish speaking community members, and make them aware that this resource is available. Next slide. We've been using social media. We've been pumping it out through our own social media presence at Maker Housing Partners through Facebook and Twitter, but also we've been doing Facebook ad buys. So we've actually been advertising on Facebook about this program targeted in our geographic areas. And so we've been, we think we've been getting some pretty good hits and traffic on that. I haven't seen the latest on those social media reports, but we've been pushing it out through social media. Next slide. And then we've also been doing print radio and TV. This is Baruki Ruiz, one of our resource navigators who did an interview with Telemundo. We've gotten some good press from Denverite, getting the word out about this particular initiative as well. And so that's been helping as well too. And then next slide. And our landlord strategy is a little more difficult in that it needs to be a much more targeted approach to get the attention of our landlords. So we've been doing some more direct outreach to landlords. We're right now, you know, working directly with Jason and Tracy to do some more targeted outreach in Commerce City to all of your landlords to make sure that they're aware of our landlord process. We're really trying to push the landlord application hard right now because that really is the way that we'll be able to get resources out into the community quickest because it's our sort of biggest bang-for-the-buck application that we've got where we can, we can help more people with roughly the same amount of administrative burden as we could with a single application for a single tenant. Next slide. So I want to give you a bit of a status report on where we are in terms of our data and getting resources out into Commerce City so far. Next slide. So applications received so far, and these are all Commerce City numbers. We've got 147 tenant applications right now that are in our queue overall. We've got three landlord applications with 12 tenants total in those three landlord applications from Commerce City. And then we've helped one family through that Colorado Legal Services strategy that I mentioned. So the total households that we've helped so far or that are in the queue, I should say, in terms of applications are 160. Next slide. So money that we put out into the community so far. Cares Funds for Commerce City is a total of $32,890. It's 14 households. Individuals, that's the individual application approach. It's three households, almost $14,000. Colorado Legal Services, the one that I mentioned, that was $5,800. So that was obviously solving, you know, pretty probably several months of delinquency for one family. And then our landlord strategy, 11 households for $13,000. I'm guessing you're looking at that $32,890 and that's not blowing you away right now, given that you all you've granted to us $500,000 of Cares Funds and a totally understandable reaction. We'll get to the next slide and I'll explain over the next couple of slides where, why we're still optimistic about where we're going to be. Next slide, please. So total applications from Commerce City in process right now are 125 applications. So the potential assistance amount that that represents is $411,250. So that's practically arriving right there at the 500,000 that we want to get to together. And plus the assistance that we've got so far that we've already put out into Commerce City, the $32,890. So we're already, you know, we're getting close to $450,000 represented right now. That's either been put out into the community or currently is in the queue from Commerce City. Now, the $411,250 is a projection number and it's based on the average amount that we've assisted per household from Commerce City has been $3,290. So we took that average and we multiplied it by the number that are in the queue. And so that is a projection number, but I think a relatively strong one. Next slide, please. And so your next question might be, so okay, where are we in the queue? And how long is it going to take us to get through all of these applications? And so we've got, let me describe these different layers. The 92 that are in process means that we have an application from an individual, but the application is incomplete. So what that means is, is that our resource navigator staff are still reaching out and helping that individual complete their application. They submitted an application, but it didn't have everything that it needed. That happens pretty often in our, on all of our applications where we don't get all of the information that we need from residents as they submit their application. And so there's a lot of work that has to happen to reach back out, get the proper information to complete the application. So we've got 92 that are incomplete. We've got in the review status, that's 32 that are incomplete, which means that they are now complete applications and they're moving forward in the process towards approval. We have assisted, which is 12 that have already been paid and assisted. So those are already out the door. And then we have 11 that are not yet reviewed, which means that those are actually still waiting way up in the back of the queue that we haven't even had a chance to review yet to see what's missing in those applications. And so the numbers to really pay attention to here are kind of this 32 and this 92. And for where we are on the 32 right now, we believe that we're three to four weeks from getting all of those 32 out the door and paid. And then in the 92, we see ourselves in the four to six week, six week range of getting all of those out the door and paid. And so we still feel confident that we can get through most or all of these applications before our current timeframe that we're locked into runs out. And so, next slide, please. And so reason for my optimism on this is some recent things that we've done in our process have resulted in a significant increase in our ability to get money out the door. So one, a lot of, I think, you know, one of the tough things for the Commerce City team is that we hadn't had a lot of Commerce City applications actually come in prior to the Cares Act funds and our partnership around the Cares Act funds. A lot of what we were getting was from Thornton, Westminster, unincorporated, North Glenn. And so when you all came in and we began in partnership together and we started marketing hard in Commerce City, a lot more applications started coming in, but you all were entering back into the backend of the queue. And there weren't already a bunch of Commerce City folks that were in the queue that would immediately get the Cares Act money, that we were closer to being processed and checks cut. And so that kind of, you know, that's slowing things down a little bit for Commerce City. However, where we are right now, when we implemented the Cares Act, we actually changed our application and streamlined it completely. And that's, the application is streamlined both on the tenant end, but also on our end as well and is much quicker and easier to process. And so we're moving a lot faster. Also Lakshmi, who you maybe heard a little bit earlier, is our expert CQI team member and has been helping us find process improvement in both the tenant and the landlord side. And so she's helped us move a lot faster by working some kinks out of our system as well. And then lastly, with the advent of the landlord process, we see an opportunity to get more money out faster too. And that just started in mid-August. And so you can see, we were, you know, if you look at these numbers, we're probably averaging in the territory of about $55,000 or so dollars every two weeks in what we were putting out into the community. And then halfway through August, right about when all of these changes that I talked about all kicked in, we jumped in a two-week period to putting out $177,583 into the community. And we feel like this is a pretty consistent level that we can operate at. So and in fact, see some opportunity for growth in this as well. Our target is actually to do, we're shooting for $300,000 every two weeks. We're not quite there yet. But we think if we can really gin up the landlord strategy and get a lot more applications in there, that will be our way to get to that 300,000. So I threw in an awful lot at you pretty quickly, but hopefully this gives you some of the basic information that you were looking for and happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone on council have any questions for the representatives of Maker Housing?
Does anyone on council have any questions for the representatives of Maker Housing? Councilwoman Noble?
Thank you very much. I am, two things. One is that I had been under the impression that we were also helping folks with mortgages, not simply rent. And that would include home mortgages so that people could keep their homes. And the second is that in speaking with someone else in Commerce City today, I think an interesting way of reaching people that we haven't explored that much are the high schools. And that the kids in these families can get word back to the families about opportunities for things like rental assistance or mortgage assistance. And, and I would like to understand better. There will never be enough money. I know that. We don't have enough money right now to cover everyone. So I'm glad we're able to do what help we can.
Thanks. Great. Thank you for asking that question because it, it's an important clarification. I didn't, I didn't mention mortgage assistance enough. We are doing rental and mortgage assistance. The, the numbers that are coming in are significantly leaning towards more rental assistance than mortgage assistance. What are we at about? Lakshmi, maybe about 10 or less than 15% that we're doing is mortgage that comes in, I think. And the vast majority is rent, but we are indeed doing mortgage assistance as well. And then, yeah, that's a great idea in terms of outreach. I think you're right. Going through the schools, kids to parents, particularly in our Spanish-speaking families, I think are a great way of, of reaching out to families. So thanks for that.
Less than 10% are homeowners.
Less than 10%?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, would like to thank everybody for your time and presentation this evening. It's good to know that this is being put to good use and hopefully it's benefiting members of our community. Next on the agenda is the Suncor Settlement SEP Community Process. Would environmental planner Dominic Martinelli please make the presentation?
All right. Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. I will be giving the presentation tonight on the Suncor Supplemental Environmental Projects Process and how the city has been involved in the state process that is currently underway. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here. Okay. So a little bit of background here. On March 6th, Suncor reached a settlement agreement with Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment for violations that occurred between 2017 and 2019. The total fine amount was $9 million. And a number of those funds were applied in different areas, but within the settlement agreement that was reached, 2.6 million of that was dedicated to the use of environmental projects. So this is a process that has been utilized throughout Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment to issue projects, middles and types of community-led projects that have direct impacts on the community. So all of the violation amount didn't go to this. And there have been other circumstances where CDPHD has used the SEP framework in the past to provide community value and projects from violations that have occurred. So essentially what happens is local governments and nonprofit organizations that are considered an impacted community as it relates to the settlement would have the opportunity to submit a project proposal for any portion of the funding amount. This includes Commerce City, this includes Adams County, this includes the city and county of Denver. Nonprofits that are generally within the proximity of the refinery are, from our understanding from the state, as potential organizations that can apply for this funding. So within that, a state formal evaluation committee is currently being formed by Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment to assess these types of projects. At a minimum, this includes a staff member from the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, or represented from Suncor, and an undetermined number of community representatives. The RFA has not been released at the time that we published this presentation, but I do want to provide a brief update that we did receive correspondence from the state that they are anticipating that the RFA submission window will be open from October 1st to November 14th. Within that, they're going to be doing additional community outreach engagement. So that's been happening at the state level as well as Suncor. Through that community engagement process, if it's determined that that window should be extended or postponed, they, they will, they may or may not do that. But as of right now, for the purposes of this presentation and discussion, the window to submit project ideas would be through October 1st to November 14th. So a little bit of background on the evaluation criteria that the state of Colorado is going to be using and evaluating these submissions. And this is the same framework that they've used for all of the SEP processes that they've gone through in the past. So the first one is that the project, project creates a measurable environmental or public health impact. So the, the emphasis here and what's been stressed is that in terms of the state potentially selecting a project for consideration, it has to be a project proposal that is measurable in some capacity. So looking at air quality impacts or water monitoring projects where you can go and actually measure pre-conditions and then post-conditions and come with some sort of measurable objective data to kind of demonstrate how that project has succeeded, failed, or none of the above is, is the criteria they're looking at. The project benefits the geographic area impacted by the violation. So there has to be some relationship between where the violation is occurring and the community that is adjacent to it. The project is not required to address the same environmental concerns by the valuation. So for instance, if it's specifically, as we're talking about Suncor, these were all majority air quality violations. The evaluation criteria that they state, they do not have to be air quality focused. While there is some connection there, it can be some sort of community benefit from an environmental capacity regardless. So some other notes in terms of the state's evaluation process. These funds cannot be used for items that are already within an adopted city budget or long-term capital improvement plan. So project that the city, or projects that the city has within their adopted budget or the CIPP, you can't use that funding to kind of take over somewhere where there's already been allocated funding for a project. So a little bit of a background and overview on how the city has engaged with the state's process. So we've essentially been taking feedback and ideas that have been received in an online forum. That's been live on the city's website since the beginning of August. The submissions for project ideas closed on September 3rd. So then we, we also held a, a community forum on August 13th where we received feedback from the community and a brief explanation of the process and answering any questions that members of the general public had. We're currently in the process of having a discussion right now to assess the information we've received thus far. The city would then draft and submit proposals to the state based on the feedback that's received. And then through the state's process, they would select which projects, how many, and the amount of funding that is funded for all of those. So a little bit of background on what the city has done in terms of engagement on this. There's been a website, c3.gov/SEP that was set up to detail how the city's process would be with this. It received 324 visits from 288 unique users. And the survey link was live from August 4th to September 3rd. The website is still live and active. You just can't submit a project idea as of today. The town hall was held on Thursday, August 13th, and attended by 32 participants. There were live translation services provided and questions were answered from the general public on the process. And there was listening on those potential project ideas and kind of facilitating, facilitating a discussion on how the city could be involved in this process. There were a number of social media posts that were done with a significant amount of engagements and then social media posts shared by Colt Avando. And there were a number of, I believe, publication postings that linked to the SEP process that, and the SEP webpage that the city set up. There was a Channel 8 information slides. This includes monitors at the Civic Center as well as the, the live Channel 8 feed. Commerce City Connected, there was information included on this in September, which is mailed to every home in the city and posted online. And then there was a bilingual flyer that was shared with a number of community organizations talking about this process. So within the community outreach and engagement that the city did on this, to kind of help facilitate the discussion, we really focused and asked the main question of, given these seven topic areas, where should the city focus its resources on its middle? We'll get into a little bit of the data and the analytics that we received through this question, but this is just kind of setting up how that, how that works. So this is an example of previous supplemental environmental project examples that have been funded through the state's process. So again, this isn't related to Suncor, but this is other projects from other state violations that have occurred and the types of projects that have been funded through this program. So it includes home energy and weatherization upgrades for low-income families, solar energy installations, building efficiency or lighting upgrades, electric vehicle charging stations, electric lawnmower purchases, environmental restoration projects, diesel emission reduction projects, and environmental education projects. So we'll get into a little bit on the community feedback that we received through the online forum and the engagement that we did. So we received a total of 49 responses through the online forum. 51% of those folks that did submit had a project idea, had a specific idea for a project. 49% did not, but wanted to provide feedback to the city. Roughly 80% of the folks were not affiliated with a nonprofit, but 20% were. So this is a, an item I wanted to highlight. Given that a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that has some sort of relationship to the refinery in proximity can submit a project idea on their own without being involved with the city in any capacity. 82% of residents were city and we did get about 18% submissions from non-residents. So this is just kind of a heat map showing where we did receive submissions through the online forum. There are a couple outliers outside of this area, one or two. But for the purposes of this map, this generally shows the breakdown of where we received submissions. So the question that we asked, which areas should the city focus on in its submittal? You can see the breakdown by topic category and the icons on the left will, will kind of be symbolic through the rest of this presentation. And we'll get into a little, little bit more with that. But overwhelmingly through, and let me stress this, this is specifically through the online engagement forum. And given the amount of responses, this is really sort of a snapshot to try and get our best estimate as to what community concerns might be given the way that we structured this. But through that process, we, we did kind of see some results that we were generally expecting in terms of air quality and water quality and public health being some of the, the highest ranking criteria. Water quality did end up being the item that most folks indicated that they had the greatest concern with, with air quality and environmental restoration being the close second. So we also asked folks that had a specific project idea to make their best guess at where they anticipate that their project would have the greatest impact in the community. The types of projects that we received, folks self-ranked these as community visual or aesthetic improvement projects with public health, air quality and water quality being runner-ups in that capacity. And then some general takeaways within the, the study session packet, we did include sort of a more full caption and assessment of the data that we received. But some, some major overall takeaways from the data that we did get is the majority of residents said that we, the city should focus on air quality, water quality, environmental restoration and public health outcomes. Those categories have some overlap and potential projects could be successful in addressing multiple outcomes. So for example, creek restoration projects could address both water quality and environmental restoration outcomes. So if you kind of look at some of these projects that we'll go over, they may not be focused on one specific area. Some of them are, but some of the, the potential outcomes for these projects could hit on multiple topics or areas of concern for the community. We did kind of look at this data. We, we asked for addresses within the submittal to kind of geo-reference and locate and see what types of concerns people were concerned on based on where they lived and their, their location. And we did find through the data that we received that the data demonstrated a higher interest in air quality and public health compared to the baseline data within three miles of the refinery boundary. Some other takeaways, when asked what expected benefits your project have, we kind of went over this visual and aesthetic improvements, public health, air quality and water quality outcomes. Many of the verbal project ideas submitted to the city had an overlap between water quality, environmental restoration and wildlife restoration. So when we're talking about this, this is the, the verbal feedback that we received through the town hall that was held on August 13th. So there was a lot of talk about community gardens, additional tree plantings, green space or specific projects to address environmental quality. A lot of those do have some overlap. There was a focus on community health as it relates to indoor air quality improvements, which we certainly found to be an interesting takeaway that there could be the utilization of some of these funds to actually improve residential homes within proximity to the refinery through weatherization, through HEPA filters or actual improvements to homes to make the indoor air quality and ambient environment that people live in to increase. Majority of the project submissions that then did end up being, they ended up being more idea generation. There, there, the majority of the projects, or there was a minority that got really specific in detail about implementation and how this project would be carried out. But a lot of these were really just sort of idea generation. These are things I'd like to see. This is an example of something that we would want to look at in terms of what the community recommended. So here's just a couple of selected examples of the types of projects that were proposed by the community through this. One of them was the development of a community solar farm, which residences and businesses would subscribe to the project. So basically using these funds to develop some sort of community solar farm on an undeveloped parcel in the city and receive a credit on their monthly energy bill based on the subscription amount. Another one was replace sheet metal grade control structures on Sand Creek. We'll get into this one a little bit more in depth. But focusing on environmental restoration from a water quality perspective, creating natural restoration of the floodway and then positive benefits to water quality and wildlife as a result of that project. There were multiple requests for community tree plantings. So that was a common theme that we, we saw throughout the submissions. Trail corridor improvements around Sand Creek. There is a little bit of uncertainty of this regarding the, the federal process that's currently underway and just beginning for the I-270 expansion. So we're, we're kind of unsure exactly how that would play out, but it is something that a member of, members of the community outlined. We did talk a little bit about indoor air quality improvements and then public education campaigns on protection during air pollution exposure. So reaching out to the community and utilizing these, these funds to kind of come up with a community education campaign to talk about, if you, you have a poor air quality day, if your quality index is over 100, what specific steps as you as an individual in the community can you take to protect yourself? Especially if you have asthma or, or pre-existing health conditions, what some strategies might be to engage the public and communicate that information? So within this, we, we went through and took a look at all the possible project submissions, took a look at all of the notes and the information that the city has received from the state on the process and what they're looking for and came up with four potential projects just to discuss for tonight's study session and see what the general thoughts and consensus were. So the first one we're going to cover, this was a recommendation that was provided from the Sand Creek Regional Greenway, which is the restoration of Sand Creek in terms of essentially replacing a number of the existing drop structures. So you can see in the left image, the concrete drop structure and there's a number of metal grades and these exist along the Sand Creek corridor alignment and restoring them to natural environmental conditions, as you can see on the right. This type of project as proposed by Sand Creek Regional Greenway, it would involve coordination with the city, the Greenway, most likely the mild-high flood district and a number of other entities to make this type of project happen. But it would essentially create improvements in the natural structures and there can be environmental restorations and additional tree plantings and creating more natural ambient conditions along the Sand Creek, which could provide improved water quality and pH levels for aquatic life and attempt to address water quality issues in this way. And, and part of that, too, can be the creation of additional park amenities, tree plantings, active transportation trails. And we really felt that this project submission, or project submission covered a number of different categories that we received feedback during the study. or project submission covered a number of different categories that we, um, received feedback during the community engagement process. So this was one that um, addressed the may, the, from our data that we received, um, the most significant concern from the community as well as addressing three other topics of significance, including environmental restoration, public health outcomes and, um, visual improvements within the community. Um, and then we're gonna, as we go through all these, just talk about the estimated project budget. In terms of the, the amount within the survey, we, we asked, um, folks with community project ideas, what they estimate their budget would be. Um, and for this one, it'd be about one to one point five million. So this one, additional air monitoring, uh, we know this has been an area of significant discussion in the community, um, with city council and a number of different state and local agencies. Um, so a while back, the city partnered with the city and county of Denver, Adams County, Tri-County Health Department to submit um, to the EPA air toxins grant for additional air quality monitoring and, and monitoring of black carbon and a number of volatile organic compounds. Um, this project was not selected for funding by the EPA. Um, but in terms of a kind of low effort, um, little investment in terms of actually crafting a proposal, this would be relatively easy to convert to a project submission to the state. Um, but a couple of things that we do want to highlight here, um, for council's consideration and as it pertains to air monitoring. Uh, we know that there was a discussion on August twenty ninth to proceed with additional um, city efforts as regards to air quality and water quality monitoring. Um, so that's essentially in place. Carter Department of Public Health and Environment, um, is currently working with the city to deploy, uh, monitoring within the southern area of Commerce City. So that includes the SPOD monitors, um, which are kind of the low cost, um, VOC monitors that um, are going to be placed in the community as well as their Camel mobile lab, which we'll go more into specific depth on a number of these items. Um, so because of this and given that there's a number of different avenues that air monitoring is being pursued and given that the state is already using some of the funds, um, from the, the violation to address additional community monitoring. And there was a portion of the, the Suncor violation that included, um, the requirement for additional, um, H E N monitoring on the refinery. So there's, there's a number of other efforts going on on monitoring. Um, so that is one consideration in terms of whether or not the state would be interested in selecting such a project to move forward. Um, it's certainly a very strong option that the city would want to consider, but those are some of the caveats with that. Um, so this could have an estimated project budget of one to one point five million. Again, these can increase, uh, depending on scale. Um, but just for background and reference, um, within the EPA grant that was submitted, uh, six proposed monitoring locations plus cost sharing services and, uh, data analysis that occurs after that was estimated at ninety seven thousand dollars. Um, so we talked about, just very briefly on this was the idea of a community solar farm. Uh, so this was the idea of converting, converting and underutilized parcels. So this could be a low lane value parcel with access issues or brownfield opportunity. Um, these are, these are parcels that may not be developed or may not be primed for development because of another, a number of development constraints. Um, some of these may or may not be owned by the city already, but could be designed to include a community garden or some other additional city amenity as part of this. Um, in terms of taking one of these parcels and converting them into a community solar farm, where residents could offset portions of their energy bill on a monthly basis, um, to consume renewable energy. So in terms of that, it could be inclusive for low incomes, um, could be inclusive for low income residents through a specific program. So you could designate priority or have a certain percentage share of that community solar farm for residents that are making, um, a certain AMI or percent, or percentage of the annual median income to have preference or priority in, uh, receiving these credits. Um, so this one is a little bit harder to pin down based on, um, project costs, but it depends on the size of the parcels that are selected. Um, it depends, it also partially depends on brownfield. Um, there are some technologies that exist in place um, to basically take a capped landfill and not dig below, um, the cap and do solar panels that exist on that, but they're typically not able to produce as much electricity as, as where you're able to get in and actually have solar panels that rotate, um, and capture more energy output. Um, and it also depends on a pretty detailed and in-depth process on bid contract details with Excel. Uh, but we're, we're putting this as anywhere from one to two point five million for a cost. Um, it's renewable energy is not the highest rated project idea based on public feedback, uh, but the potential for air quality emissions and carbon offset potential is significantly high. Um, so this is the, the final recommendation or presentation for discussion tonight is indoor air quality improvements. Uh, many respondents emphasized public health improvements and specifically air quality. Um, and there could be the potential to, uh, potential opportunity to fund installation of new HVAC systems, ventilation improvements, HIPAA air filters and purifiers and other residential improvements to indoor, to improve indoor air quality for homes in proximity to the refinery. So this could be a num, this could be a pretty wide range. Um, but we'll kind of narrow it down and talk specifically about indoor air quality improvements. So improving the ambient indoor air quality um, for a residential home as well as thinking about, um, weatherization. So that's upgrading existing homes to make them more energy efficient and sort of airtight, which has some sort of connection to that, but ultimately the more of energy efficient homes are, um, the less demand on the grid and uh, there's, there's savings there as well. Um, so the community development block grant program, which was housed within community development has a number of existing household energy and efficiency and safety programs, um, that funds can be used for. Uh, there are some caveats here, um, where the, the funding from SEP can't be used to be placed in the same pot as where C D B G is currently pulling from. But there, this, the car or the community development block program that the city has has a limit of seventy five hundred dollars per individual request for a project. So if there is a request to do weatherization that exceeds ten thousand dollars or, um, something within the minor home repair program, that the funding potentially could be used there. And there is an existing framework of project administration management that already exists to help facilitate that process and make it go a little bit quicker. So that being said, this estimated project budget could vary depending on how much we want to propose, um, having that money be. So for instance, if you say that you will propose, um, one million dollars for, um, these funds. You divide that by an average of ten thousand dollars per an expected, um, individual proposed modification to a home, that, that could serve up to a hundred homes. So it depends on how, how scalable you want it to be. So this one is a little bit more flexible. So we did kind of just rank these comparisons and kind of show the cost estimates. Um, and the, the, the staff resources is expected to kind of get a proposal together and then administrate it or administer it through the long run. Um, and then we also have a comparison and, and looked at um, existing comprehensive plan goals that each one of these projects could meet, just to provide a little bit of color of how this fits into what the city's um, divine community or defined community vision is to this point. Um, some of the public benefits that each one of these projects would meet. And then quantifiable outcomes is an estimate that we came up with, um, to essentially say in terms of being able to measure and quantify the impacts that this, um, public proposal or, or this potential project would have on the community. For example, with the community solar project, you would have pretty, pretty specific information through, uh, metering to know how much, um, energy offset is being used to this program based on the number of subscribers, um, the energy output and production from that facility. And you can measure and say, okay, we know exactly what sort of output this had. Um, and you can kind of compare it that way. Additional air monitoring is essentially similar to be able to say, here's the exact data we've got. Um, while there's, the air monitor is essentially monitoring and data analysis. Um, there's, there's nothing in terms of air quality improvements associated with, that this, at this time, but just to kind of explain where as the Sand Creek restoration, you'll certainly be able to do air quality monitoring, or I'm sorry, um, water quality monitoring and testing, um, pre and post, um, the implementation of the project. Uh, but there may be some, um, non-measurable externalities, um, in terms of people that are using the trail. Um, and a number of kind of ecological, uh, restoration components as part of it. So with that being said, we can open it up for discussion and just kind of as a, a discussion point. Um, and kind of leading off with council, out of the four projects that were highlighted, which are council most interested in seeing the city pursue within the application? Um, are there any other project ideas that council reviewed as part of the overall, um, comment period submission that would like to see staffers further? Are there any additional project ideas that council might have that wasn't contained here in this presentation? Um, and then would council like to see, um, resources focused on one, or sorry, focused on one specific proposal? Or, um, break the proposals down into maybe two or three? So with that, I'll go ahead and stop sharing my screen here. Um, we can go ahead and answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Martinelli from council? Councilman Madera.
Yes, so, um, how did you go about rating these? You know, was it all rated equally, you know, for someone who lives within three miles of the refinery to, you know, some of those, uh, responses were fifteen miles away on the other side of Commerce City?
Um, so I will say in terms of geographic proximity, uh, we did look and, and tried to evaluate and assess the data based on where people basically, number one, what were your concerns and where did you feel the city should focus on in its submittal? And number two, based on where you live. Um, we did highlight, so overall, if you look at it as a trend, there weren't, there weren't any discernible differences based on proximity through the data when controlling for, um, submissions that were outside of the city. Um, and based on northern range and core city, except for the air quality portion that we discussed. Um, so folks that were within three miles of the refinery, um, had more of a concern on public impact and air quality than um, the overall submission base. So as we looked at that, we went through the project submissions. Um, and then through this assessment process, looked at the types of feedback that we were getting, the discussion that we've, that we had during the, um, the public input meeting, um, as well as the feedback and the information that we received from, uh, the Suncor supplemental environmental, um, coordinator, um, where their data was and kind of went through on that table. And I'll, I'll go ahead and share the screen as well. Um, just in terms of trying to discern this information and see what are some of the public benefits that could be expected to this project? And then how is it measurable? So looking at those things and kind of comparing it in addition to what the community voiced is, um, major areas of concern and areas they wanted to see the city focused on versus what the state has outlined thus far in their, in their engagement as what they would rank as a viable project submittal, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I guess, you know, my concern with Sand Creek, um, being number one is, um, all those outlined projects that are included in this are going to be upstream from, um, Suncor and not necessarily, um, you know, diverting any of the impact from the refinery. And so I guess it just comes down to how's that going to benefit the community most impacted? Because, you know, my community doesn't even have, uh, a trailhead or any access to Sand Creek. You know, I have to drive all the way to fifty six and, uh, uh, was it Niagara or, you know, over there to the other side in order to get onto Sand Creek. And so, you know, a lot of these communities, it's the same type of deal, right? It's, you know, they're not necessarily the ones that are using this trail. And to put all our eggs into that basket, um, you know, I'm gonna be seeing people asking, why aren't we getting air quality monitoring? Because C P H E's air quality monitors, um, they don't monitor what's in the air. All they give you is a number, you know, on, uh, parts per billion or a million, whatever they're measuring, but it, it could be, you know, anything. So you don't know what exactly is being emitted and by who. So, um, you know, I'm not opposed to working with the C P H E on air quality monitoring, but we need to do something better where we can tell what's being emitted. And, you know, it works both ways, right? Either give assurance to our residents and say, look, this is what the monitors are reading. And, you know, there's nothing to worry about or look, this is what we're seeing happening and, you know, we have that data to then go back and try to find some sort of remedy. So, um, yeah, my concern for Sand Creek is just the benefit to the residents that are in the immediate proximity. I, I think, you know, you said it in your presentation that, um, they're more, they tend to be more focused on uh, health concerns and air quality. And I think our submittal should reflect that because at the end of the day, you know, Sand Creek Regional Greenway is a five oh one C and they can also apply for that, that same grant. I know it's, it's more impactful if we're also submitting that same proposal. But, I mean, we have to think about the residents and the people that are around the community. And I think that, you know, from what I've heard over the, the years, it's always comes down to air quality and, you know, and, and health concerns. And I think our, our submittal has to reflect that.
Right. Yeah, that, that certainly makes a lot of sense. And a couple of caveats I want to kind of put out on this data and the information that we received is, it's, it's certainly only a snapshot of the greater picture. Um, and as we talk about this and we talk about our project rankings, um, I don't think that we, we viewed this as, um, one through four is one being the best and four being the worst or anything like that. Um, we've really viewed this as the four top project submissions. Um, I don't think that this, the ranking really should get too into depth, but I think that looking at this and kind of thinking about the overall picture, part of the discussion could be, um, should there be one sole focus within the project SEP submission or are some of these potential ideas equally weighted? Um, should there be multiple submissions as part of that as well? And I think, uh, Councilman Madera, you, you do realize, or you do raise a number of really good, um, topics and specifically that folks that are within proximity of the refinery have been voicing more concerns over air quality. And part of this too, and for tonight's discussion, um, we have the feedback that we got at the staff level from this in terms of, um, the feedback we got. Um, if there's additional concerns and, and things that you have all heard within the community, that should be a part of this discussion and, and part of the evaluation as well. It's, it's certainly welcomed.
Yeah, you know, I think we should take into account, you know, the, the impact and try to reflect that with our submission and you know, maybe we should have, you know, two or three submissions and go about it in that way where you know, we're not just putting all our eggs in one baskets. I, I know, you know, the rankings kind of seem to be what, what would be the, the strongest submission and then going from there. But I, I think that, um, you know, helping people with their air quality, whether it be um, in their homes, you know, most of the homes around here don't have HVAC. I'm probably glistening right now because, uh, it's kind of warm. But, uh, you know, so, um, a lot of these issues that we're dealing with over here by the refinery, I think this is a good opportunity to to focus on that and try to work on that and try to really focus on people's healthcare and, and air quality.
Absolutely.
Councilwoman Ellen Thomas?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, um, Mr. Martinelli for your presentation. Um, had a few concerns or questions, um, but on slide number fifteen, um, when you mentioned like the Sand Creek restoration as well. Have we checked the foundation of the areas that would be restored, um, before we just start restoring those areas? Because, um, that I know of, we've already had at least three plume spills in that area. So are we addressing those, the sources before we, you know, start restoration on the Sand Creek areas? Cause like I said, that doesn't seem either like a big top priority, um, till we make sure the foundation is discovered and that we're not just, you know, pouring something and exist over a foundation that is possibly, you know, toxic or not healthy to the environment or the health as well. Um, and we, I'm wondering, does those areas, has it been looked into where the restoration is supposed to occur? Are those any sources of where the plumes occur?
So I'm not, I don't know if I have the, the background on that specific instance as it relates to this. Um, in terms of the project ideas and submissions, these are a little bit more high level, um, in terms of their, the, the implementation and those types of things. Obviously those types of assessments would need to be conducted and, um, um, part of the R E Court of Engineers and Um, um, part of the R E Court of Engineers and, um, Mile High Flood District and our public work staff would be able to. Go more in depth and assess that and, and look at the duration of Sand Creek and see. Okay, there might be instances along Sand Creek where the issues that you were describing are more prevalent than others. Um, and looking at that and assessing and saying, is there a viable project within that? To go in depth and, and given this point in time, um. Given that there's no grant funding already allocated to the city to go and do those tests and look at that. Um, there, there would definitely need to be follow-up conversations to look at all the issues that you raised before. It's. It's something that we essentially go down the road and examine.
Um, so then there's a possibility that Suncor could leak again after we spend this money then? Do you?
I'm not sure specifically. How that relates, but it certainly, I mean. That'll have to be items that they address elsewhere through their process and, um, I think that. I mean, that there's certainly always a possibility of such an incident occurring and, um. This project would essentially attempt to try and improve water quality impacts and things of that nature, but. Um, I'm not sure if I have any additional, um, feedback on that.
Yeah, because I would just like to see, um, you know, different proposals that could do a more detailed study. Um, because that will have a better outcome. To, I feel better than the four opinions. I'm more like an environmental health. Impact to the community that lives around Suncor. And this may result in additional funding from Suncor because of the ongoing environmental failures. So. That's just how I feel. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Noble?
Councilmember Hurst was before me. Thank you.
Councilman Hurst.
Thanks for the presentation. Um, you know, this process has been somewhat of a concern of mine. Um, since I, you know, hea- heard about the total fee and, and understand how the process works. And really, it's not. Necessarily a concern on the process as much as it's two point six million dollars. We're looking at it from the Commerce City perspective. But what about Swansia neighborhood and the surrounding areas as well? It, it's tough for me to say any of those are bad ideas. I think we could really put some, some work behind each one of those. Um, ideas and build a solid application around that. The. The idea of, you know, putting an application that spends more than half the money. Doesn't seem viable to me because I think it's going to be a regional approach. If we all come with separate ideas, meaning Denver, uh, Commerce City, you know, and we don't. Collectively work together so we can take care of the surrounding areas such as Swansia. As one, I just don't think we are successful, um, in the application process or selection process. You know, if, if. If those ideas were, you know, a- also are benefiting the Swansia neighborhood and, and. Uh, at least the city council member from, uh, Denver that covers that area could get behind the idea and work with us as kind of a, a regional approach. I think we have a very strong application at that point. That would, would force the state's process to consider, consider it because of the regional support. So again, I, I don't want to be, from my perspective, I'm not going to be the driver of what idea we pick or anything like that. I think. You know, those that live in the area should be, you know, the decider of, of what. Project we support or what ideas that we support. And then from there, we all put our, our ideas and our weight behind that. To really try to push those forward. But again, I think for, for our success, for our community, it has to come from a regional perspective. Because it strengthens our position, no matter the position we take.
So thank you for that, Member Hurst. Uh, I think it, through this process and through staff's evaluation, I think we're, we're certainly. We certainly recognize that and we're, we're aware of that. Um, there were kind of significant discussions with the state about. What they're looking for in their submissions. They, they essentially said what you, you just said in terms of regional partnerships and that it's essentially looking at. All the surrounding communities that kind of come into play. Um, so as part of that. Air quality monitoring, um, in the discussions that the city's had with the state. Has been thinking more in like a regional approach. And while there might be monitors within Denver and that the Denver Love My Air program and some of the other. Components that they've broken out, Adams County, Tri-County Health and, and kind of looking at this air quality monitoring. From a regional data collection standpoint and, and saying, so if we're collecting data. In, in Illyria Swansia that might have reference to Commerce City that. All the entities involved can look at that data and start to make assessments and that type of stuff. So that. That is certainly on the board and something that's being considered and, um. While we, we're not taking these rankings of one through four as definitive. In, in sort of ranking those, that, that is kind of what brought that regional greenway idea to the forefront. Is it, is it does involve a number of different entities from a regional standpoint to kind of help facilitate that and make the project work.
Well, I, I appreciate that follow up because really, you know, my mindset is regional. Uh, air quality monitoring is the only way it really makes sense. If we're, if we're monitoring. And have a bunch of technology in Denver, but don't understand maybe where it's coming from or what happens when it leaves. You only have a small snapshot of that, that overall picture. And so if we, um. I hate to suggest this, but if we somehow piggyback on Denver's air quality system because we can. Kind of work with them and get bigger data points, um, understand the regional impacts. It becomes far more valuable for us. Um, and, you know, if we. Use this funding or additional funding to, to install regional air quality monitoring systems. That also tap into what Denver's, uh, collection system is. And I think we start. To get a better regional outlook and it, and it helps us in decision making. And so. Um, I think there's, there's probably a similar discussion can happen from a regional, uh, water quality. On Sand Creek and, and so, you know, li- like I said, all of these ideas. Once we settle on one, could be built and strengthened, uh, regionally. I just, you know, think that it's going to take some good discussions to figure out which one we want to back and get.
Yeah, and, uh, for all the items that you sort of mentioned there, um. A lot of those efforts and, and sort of trying to think about how all these different local governments can really work together have been. Um, kind of beginning and that, that groundwork is sort of already starting in those regards and. Um, Tri-County Health Department has, um, folks on staff that are, are thinking about this issue specifically and trying to have the outcome in place. Um, and then, um, I know that we're, we're looking on September twenty-ninth about the discussion of, um, additional environmental services for the city. Um, the work that occurs there can sort of piggyback off some of those efforts as well too and, um, potentially. Emphasize or increase the success and viability of some of these project proposals. And. As we think about this, we're, we're talking specifically within, um, the focus of the Suncor supplemental environmental projects. Um, but these ideas, um, and, and the state has mentioned this as well. Is they take all of the project submissions and ideas that they receive. And they keep them in a database. They don't, they don't throw away all the different project submissions that are provided. Um, and some of these, they've, they've mentioned that have been submitted to the state. End up actually getting implemented, not through the sub process, but through additional funding sources. So, um, that's part of the discussion as well.
And Dominic, I think that's valuable that we submit good projects because, say, two seventy project. Uh, and we can get economies of scale during the two seventy project and you can get in maybe some, um. Sand Creek redevelopment during that because of, you know, the shutdowns, the economies of scale, uh. You decrease the mobility cost for the construction, so on and so forth. Um. Having those ideas on paper kind of in the queue is probably a fairly decent idea for us as well.
Certainly.
Councilwoman Noble?
Thank you very much. Um. You know, we can never have enough money to, um. To cover what has been done to the community around that area and in the industrial areas. There's no question about that. And even among your four projects, we, as, as a city should consider. Doing those for the future ourselves, no matter what happens. They're all valuable projects to do. My number one concern is. A project that reinvests in the community. And that would mean the folks that live around, uh, Suncor. Um, I agree with, uh, Councilmember Madera about, uh, air quality monitoring, but the kind of air quality monitoring. That shows you exactly what is in the, uh, air. So the, what kind of VOCs, the particulates, et cetera. And so you can identify where they're coming from. I don't want to piggyback on Denver if they're not doing that. Uh, the fact that we've talked about C D P H E bringing in air quality monitoring to Commerce City is a good thing. But we need to remember that C D P H E has not brought in air quality monitoring equipment to this area ever. So this is, uh, an important step on their part, but we need to do more as well because we need to take care of our residents. And the second is, and I think this dovetails a bit with, uh, something that Councilmember Alan Thomas was talking about, and that's public health. I look at public health far differently than it's being described here. Public health is health, um, inequities, health impacts that happen on a public scale. So to identify what is occurring in that, uh, community. In partnership with perhaps the Colorado School of Public Health at the Antschutz Medical Campus. Would be, um, something important to do as well. I would hate to think that there's anybody who might not be getting health coverage. And are suffering in some fashion because of it. I know there's a lot of cases of, uh, asthma. Among kids in that area that, uh, don't occur in other parts of Commerce City. And I learned also, uh, from. The executive director of Kids First, when we were talking last week, that, uh, Suncor actually. Doesn't give money to Kids First. I think that might be kind of a conflict of interest if they did actually, because there's so many kids who. Who, um, have health impacts and health ailments because of living near Suncor's. But I think it's important to know because. That means that there are children in the Suncor area who particularly need help and support. I think one of the challenges, Dominic, and, and you guys did a really good job coming up with, um. You know, working with the community and trying to reach out to them is that it's hard for people to put. The refinery together with what's happening at their own homes or to their own families. And part of it is education, and that's where public health education comes in as well, is to identify through a survey or. A door to door. I mean, I'm talking about extensive door to door work so that you're actually with people who also speak. Um, Spanish or are bilingual, uh, or some other language so that. We're getting a true assessment of what's occurring in that community to our residents. Um. We just really have, uh, such an obligation to them and it, it's really. Means a lot to me that we might have this opportunity and I agree that we need to do it, um. Together with others, but not necessarily some of the partners that have been named, named. Thank you.
Yep. Um, so I think, thank you for that. There's a, there's a lot of things that kind of. Spur my mind as you mentioned that and, um, I think. One thing they can kind of think about too, and this, this wasn't presented because it wasn't actually received within the public feedback that we received. Um, but kind of what you said, and tell me if you're, you're hearing, if you were thinking of something different. But what you were kind of mentioning almost kind of alludes to some sort of community public health study and start to. Identify where the areas of concern are and then start to take actions off of that. And, and kind of as internally in staff as we discussed this. Um, we really thought about the question of what is community investment? Um, and I think to an extent, doing a robust and intense, um, community health study is a community investment in a way. It's not, um, investment in public infrastructure or physical tangible. Investment in the same way that development of, um. An environmental stream restoration is or developing a park is public investment. So that, that's a distinction to make and kind of just like a general. Thought for a council to disseminate as well as, is how does that relationship happen and, um. Should this money be focused on the plan making and the development upfront? Before the physical infrastructure investments and that type of stuff.
I, I think, I think that's true, Dominic, and, uh, you mentioned that, uh, we have C D B G money. That could be used, uh, for air quality internally. Um, we have talked, uh. Uh, among the council for air quality monitoring equipment, even without this, uh, two point six million. And in addition, we do have a partnership with Sand Creek in some form, don't we?
Um, so I, I don't know in, in depth to speak on the partnership between Sand Creek Greenway. I know that there has been. A lot of work that has been done in the past and Tracy Ferguson at our Parks Department. Has done a number of like joint grant efforts with Sand Creek Regional Greenway and there is a, there is a relationship there. Um, one thing that I, I do want to note and I, I'm not sure. So the, the C D B G funds, um, when we were referencing those, were, those were more focused in terms of, um, home weatherization projects. Uh, they have Paint-a-thon, they have the ability to use the C D B G funds for solar. Installations and that type of thing, up to a cap of seventy-five hundred. As far as I can understand it, and I'm, I'm sure Director Rogers will weigh in a little bit more here. Um, I don't know if the C, the existing community development block grant funds can be used for air quality monitoring. Um, so I didn't know if you wanted to weigh in a little bit more there.
Thank you, Dominic, and, uh, very good points made, uh, uh, Councilmember Noble. Uh, to clarify, uh, the city has a, it has a consolidated plan. Uh, which calls out areas of targets for improvements which the C D B G funds can be applied to. Um, as part of that, air quality monitoring has not been one of those identified use of funding. What I would also like to provide, what I think may be helpful for your consideration is that. If we are using a program, let's say the weatherization program. Uh, obviously we have a limited cap of seventy-five hundred dollars that are targeted for. Certain use as we've identified in our annual action plan was tied back to a consolidated plan. But how these dollars could be leveraged could be for some projects. That do not meet that threshold to be governed under C D B G, to which we can then extend to those. That would have, that would receive some level of denial, uh, just because they're not able to be contemplated as part of the C D, C D B G process. So this is a way of being able to extend those project, projects to a, a different format.
And, and I think it's something to consider too, that there may not be, um, as many homes around the Suncor area that can actually close up their homes. To keep the air out, you know, they don't. May not necessarily have air conditioning, for example. So we need to have that, keep that in mind also that. That internal air quality monitoring systems might not be quite as effective. An air purifier though certainly could help and does help in rooms. And I know a lot of residents have taken that step themselves, but we need to do something proactive to help them. And if we identify that we have a problem in our community that is actually causing. Um, our residents to be sick or to die or to have cancer, then we need to, to have a program. That I am, take steps to alleviate that and stop it.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for staff? Councilman Hurst?
Just real quick on Councilwoman Noble's point, um. I believe that Central Seventy took during the pre-construction of Central Seventy, there were actions. Similar to what Councilwoman Noble just stated, taken in that area as well, not, not the area we're talking about, but the Central Seventy area where. They went into the schools, improved the HVAC system there. Uh, I think went to double or triple pane windows in most of the households around there, you know, created. As, as Councilwoman was referring to, the ability to close up your house during, um. You know, if there's an event or just at night, so you don't have to sleep with the windows open, um. Just to have a more energy efficient house and that was to protect from. You know, the construction dust and, and everything else, all the, the. Potential hazards that could come with, uh, road construction and then the. What the infrastructure will support once that construction is completed. So I think at least we'll have regional. Um, precedence to go reach out and look for if that's a, just, uh, a direction that we decide to go with this application.
Any other comments or questions? Mr. Rogers?
Mayor, if there are no further questions, um, I was simply just going to make sure that I recap for. Mayor, if there are no further questions, um, I was simply just going to make sure that I recap for what I heard from council. Um, maybe ask some clarifying questions on uh, potential next steps to keep council engaged. Their thoughts about how we move through the application process, heard a lot of great things. Uh, but wanted to wait to see if there were any kind of follow-on questions to, to the discussion. Okay, um, seeing none, I guess just kind of recapping, I would say council please. Uh, correct me if I, if I miss anything out of the bigger picture conversation one. Uh, I think I heard from the, from a consensus with the broader council, uh, let's look at how we can have. A, a tangible and intangible impact in the community that surrounds uh, Suncor, uh, the greater. The, the greater populations want to see it and so forth in our core city as well. Um, focusing on uh, potentially two to three projects for submission uh, to uh. To CDPHG uh, for their determination and hopeful award notification uh, therefore. Uh, heard uh, looking at air quality monitoring. Um, looking at potentially whole improvement opportunities for residences within the local community and ultimately as well. Uh, looking at how we can uh, look at more of a community public health study or a spatial health study. That allows for us to have a, a broader understanding of the impacts associated uh, with operations within um, that area. Um, stopping there, I just want to make sure to this point I haven't missed anything uh, of council's position or thoughts on the matter. Okay, not seeing any. Um, if there is consideration for uh, water quality, um, looking at how not just upstream. Um, and not just looking at the restoration aspect of it, but doing much more due diligence assessment. Of the existing conditions to ensure to minimize future impacts and looking at opportunities. That don't look just upstream but look downstream and primarily in and around the Suncor area as well. Um, obviously understanding wanting to also have support from the community. And really helping to try to drive what applications are submitted um, to CDPHG as well. So not seeing any other questions there. What that um, I would say speaks to me. Is that staff will take this back, uh, will run through obviously the comments in the video, they again. Be able to truly digest and begin to start putting a little bit more, I'll say meat to the bone as it relates to what that application submittal may be. Uh, what it sounds is, it sounds as though is right in my mind. Is coming back to council with those applications, once we understand the details, joint ventures and partnerships. That there may be able to leverage and being able to put ourselves into a better position. So that you may be able to weigh in one last time before those applications go in. And ultimately, we will then still also look at how we can communicate with the broader community more dialed in. To the area three miles within Suncor, to be able to get their feedback on our submissions as well. Uh, within some creative manners or matters as well. Uh, is that an accurate enough kind of recapturing of our, of the conversation?
That sounds good, sir.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, council. Great conversation. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you, council.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is retail marijuana regulations and licensing process. Will Planning Manager Steve Timms please make the presentation?
Good evening, uh, council. Pleasure to present uh, for you all tonight. In addition to myself, we also have Tiffany McGraw. She's our licensing coordinator. Who will uh, walk through the licensing process uh, for you all. And uh, Dylan, if you could pull up the uh, presentation. This is a uh, council request from earlier in the year to um, to refresh uh, council with the current uh, retail marijuana regs in the city. So that's what we will uh, discuss here. Next slide, please. So this is just a brief agenda um, of the main topics we will discuss this evening. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, next slide. So within um, within the state of Colorado, this particular slide just shows the um. Regulatory approach that the state has taken going back to um, the year two thousand. And uh, going through then twenty thirteen. And um, again, it just kind of shows what the state um, allowed. And kind of set up the framework and the structure for individual municipalities to uh, consider. Uh, next slide, please. So within Commerce City though, um, it's a little bit, we, we were, um, we started our regulations in twenty twelve. Where we updated the uh, land development code, we updated the municipal code to allow uh, medical marijuana businesses and primary caregivers. And um, at that time, um, we had one application uh, came through, but it never um. It, it never went through the whole process and never opened. Uh, next slide, please. So also that year, there was the amendment sixty-four and within Commerce City, um, that did pass fifty-seven forty-three. And it did pass within twenty-eight of the thirty-two precincts within the city. So that basically then allowed the ability to do uh, retail marijuana businesses. And uh, at first in twenty thirteen and again in twenty fourteen, council at the time wanted to put a moratorium on, on those type of businesses. And then um, basically starting in twenty fourteen, they directed staff to create um, some regulations both on the land use side and the licensing side. To uh, allow retail marijuana uh, facilities in addition to um. Uh, grow facilities and infused uh, or product manufacturer facilities as well. So in twenty fifteen, then city council passed two ordinances, twenty forty-eight, twenty fifty. And that created the existing licensing and land use regulations that we have in place now. Uh, next slide, please. So um, on a, on a very high level, and I believe that you all had both ordinances included within your packet. But it did talk about the types of businesses to regulate, uh, where in the city they, they uh, should be located. Uh, what approval model should be used, uh, any limitation on the number of these businesses. Any operational standards that would be imposed upon these businesses and prohibitions of uh, of certain types of marijuana businesses as well. Uh, next slide, please. So with that, um, that's the introduction, then we'll all transfer initially to Tiffany who will talk about the current licensing process.
Yes, uh, thank you, Steve. Okay, so let's um, let's just keep the presentation going. So um, so currently uh, in Commerce City, we have uh, thirty-five total licenses. Um, and those are retail and medical uh, stores, products manufacturers and um, cultivations. Uh, so those are our six license types we have here in Commerce City. Um, slight update here, uh, since uh. I guess uh, turning in the information for this presentation, uh, we actually have two of those thirty-five. Uh, can, uh, licenses are conditional, uh, not three as of Friday, uh, just a quick edit for you all there. Um, and conditional just means that they are uh, still waiting uh, to receive their certificate of occupancy. Or maybe there's just a final um, inspection, police inspection or something like that, that they still need to complete before getting. Uh, their license and they're approved to um, begin operating. But. Um, of those thirty-five, sixteen are actually infused product manufacturers. Uh, eleven of those are uh, dispensaries stores and eight are cultivations. Um, and we currently have one uh, application, a complete application that we've received uh, in our office. And they are um, waiting for their public hearing date. Next slide. And so on this slide here, we've got uh, just the license uh, procedure that all of those thirty-five uh, have or will. Uh, go through all of these steps at some point. Uh, but the first step um. In licensure is submitting um, a letter of intent to the city clerk's office. Uh, and once that uh, form is uh, submitted to our office, we'll set up what's called a pre-application meeting. Uh, where the applicant and um, all of the uh, city departments that are involved in the licensing process. Uh, we meet and we'll uh, just discuss um, expectations. It gives us a chance to. Ask the um, applicant any questions, uh, figure out what kind of operation they'll be, they'll be proposing. And it gives the applicant a, a chance to ask questions of us as well and of course, exchange any contact information. Uh, and then the next uh, step when the applicant is ready is to actually submit the application. Um, it's a dual licensing system, so that means they must submit to the state and the local authority to the city as well. Uh, they start with the uh, marijuana enforcement division, that application is then forwarded to us, we'll. Uh, review that application as well as some other uh, documents. Uh, and then uh, go from there. Then the next step. Is to uh, hold the public hearing, uh, which we set about three months out from receipt of a complete application. Um, at this public hearing, uh, the applicant uh, gets a chance to um, uh. Discuss the neighborhood desires, they establish the neighborhood desires, um, and if they um. We look at their, well, the authority looks at their character and qualifies, uh, qualifications uh, to hold the license that they are proposing. Uh, the public hearing, um, there's several ways that the neighborhood. Um, receives notification of the public hearing. We post to the newspaper. Uh, the actual premise, the license premise is uh, posted with a notice of the public hearing. We post an agenda, of course, to the website. Um, at the civic center as well. Um, the applicant also petitions that neighborhood, so they go door to door. Uh, and that also gives the uh, the neighborhood a chance to know that uh, this, this uh, applicant is proposing a marijuana business, so. Uh, and then the next uh, step is uh, if they have not completed them already. Uh, by the time the public hearing uh, has been held, then they would have to complete um, any um, inspections, be it by building. Uh, fire department or the uh, police department for a security inspection. Next slide. And then here, uh, we've got a list of our current uh, stores here in the city. Uh, in their address, um, next, let's see, next slide, yep, that's it. Um, I can provide, if needed, I can provide a um. Uh, a more comprehensive list of all the, the businesses here in Commerce City if needed.
Thank you, Tiffany. Um, we actually did provide the entire list of the grows and the infused products as well to council, so they have all. The entire list, that's great. Thank you.
Right, great.
Um, and so the next uh, uh, next slide, please Dylan. Just uh, showing that again, revenue um, is a piece of the, of the puzzle, not the only piece, but certainly a piece, just showing that on retail stores. Um, they are bringing in um, an increased amount of revenue. Uh, between twenty-eight and twenty-nineteen, you see about one point seven million dollars uh, for the past two years, twenty-twenty, obviously we don't know. Those year-to-dates, uh, those total years numbers yet. Uh, next slide, please. So in terms of um, where retail stores can regulate, um, the next couple of slides just describe that. And uh, next slide, please. There we go. So retail stores within Commerce City are currently allowed in all of our industrial zone districts. So I one, I one S, I two and I three. In addition to the C three, the regional commercial, which is our most intense uh, commercial district. And then for PUDs, um, just like with everything with PUDs, they're individualized. I can tell you that most of them do not allow retail marijuana uses. Um, especially obviously, you know, prior to twenty twelve, when a lot of those Northern Range Pewties were done, it wasn't even contemplated. Um, some of the newer ones um, allow them or default to the land development code. Um, uh, I think the updated one for uh, reunion and uh, the legato one. Um, allows them in uh, in non-residential areas. Next slide, please. So there is a separation requirement required for any uh, new retail store. And you'll see that it's a thousand feet um, there of those items uh, that are highlighted. And then in addition to that, um, there's also a five hundred foot uh, separation for basically any residential. Uh, property or a property with a residential entitlement, including mixed use or agricultural. So um, any retail store has to be five hundred feet away from those residential properties, a thousand feet from those uses above. Um, those uh, distances are measured from property line to property line, not building to building. Um, so we look at the, we use our GIS um, uh, system. And uh, it basically buffers and, and automatically measures the uh, distance from the perimeter of the outside of the, of the uh, property line. To the uh, surrounding property lines as well. Uh, I will note that um, uh, other uses other than uh, retail, so grow facilities and uh. Infused product manufacturers, those have to be a thousand feet away from a residential. Next slide, please. So this is a comparison, we just updated it in August. Um, you also have it as an attachment. Um, because this one can be hard to read, but it shows um, how our comparisons and our separation requirements. Uh, compared to some jurisdictions around the uh, state and um. Uh, you can kind of compare and see that some are less, less restrictive, some are more restrictive. It really um, kind of looks at the, the local conditions and, and what's occurring there. Next slide, please. So in terms of the role of community development, um, basically planning will perform a zoning verification for any proposed marijuana use. And then as part of that, we check the um, those separation numbers that we just looked at. And then if allowed, then the applicant will include the verification in their overall application to the city clerk that Tiffany spoke of in terms of that application submittal. And then um, as she alluded to, the, again, the application review and analysis and hearing and notification is handled through the city clerk's office. And then um, building department will get involved obviously with the tenant finishes. Um, with the building, with the inspections, with the certificate of uh, occupancy at the end of the process as well. Uh, next slide, please. So in terms of the location, um, and this goes back to when the ordinance was first adopted as well. So um, within Commerce City, you know, we, we have some commercial areas, but they tend to be pretty long and narrow. If you think up um, up highway two or Quebec or even a hundred and fourth, we, we have, we have a lot of commercial strips. But they're, but they're not really deep. And so um, what that means is for our community is that there aren't that many actual commercial zones. Um, along arterials, because again, retail stores want that visibility um, in order to succeed. But there's very few opportunities for retail marijuana within the city. Um, so that's, that could be one reason why we have them where they are, but in terms of where they're not, there's probably a good reason why they're not. Uh, next slide, please. Now, these are just a couple of examples in the GIS system. I believe Jose inquired about this one earlier in the year. This is the one on uh, on highway eighty-five, seventy-one fifty there, Udora, and the question was, was um, and you'll see it. It's kind of crosshatched, it's a small industrial lot. And you'll see the, the perimeter, the colors there and the green is five hundred feet, the red is a thousand feet, the purple is fifteen hundred feet. And um, I think one of the questions was, was how close will it be to the new elementary school they're building on the old Adam City High School site? And uh, this one shows that um, that elementary school will be on the, on the western part of that property. But um, you're looking at, at probably a good eighteen hundred or nineteen hundred feet away from that one. Um, the uh, the park there on the other side is the Fairfax Park, that's just um. Under fifteen hundred feet. So that's kind of shows you some distances away. And uh, the perimeter are the uh, the boundaries only apply to Commerce City properties, not to Adams County properties or unincorporated Adams County properties. Next slide, please. So this one, another example, the hundred and twentieth and Chambers, I know this one has received uh, uh, fair amount of attention lately. And there's a lot going on in this slide, so we can just take each corner and talk about these. Um. So what you see highlighted there is a parcel next to the existing gas station and liquor store just to the east. And you'll see that there's a buffer drawn around that, the green is five hundred, the red is a thousand. And you'll see that um, again, this goes back to the, the narrowness of our commercial uh, areas. That, that's too narrow and you'll see that it touches and crosses those lots on the north side of the hundred and twenty-first. So uh, within the northeast side, um, a retail store under the current conditions would not be allowed. Due to the uh, due to the separation requirements that are currently in place. Um, on the south side, both the uh, southeast and southwest have commercial designations. However, um, they do not allow retail marijuana. And so any, any retail marijuana store that wanted to go there would have to uh, apply for a rezoning that would have to be reviewed by city council. And then on the northwest side, that's a property that um, has an application right now to annex into the city. They're proposing a C two designation. And if you remember a couple of slides back, um, retail marijuana is not allowed in C two, it has to be a C three. And so it would not um, be allowed on that northwest side. So basically all four corners of a hundred and twentieth and Chambers. Under the current regulations and the current conditions that exist today, uh, our retail store would not work at any of those four corners. All right, and I believe, next slide, I believe that then concludes our uh. our brief discussion on retail, but myself and Tiffany are certainly available with additional answers and questions for council.
Thank you for that presentation. Are there any questions from council to staff regarding this discussion, Adam? Councilwoman Noble.
Councilmember Noble, you're muted still.
You're right, I am. Thank you. Appreciate the presentation. I have questions, of course. Mr. Timms, did you just say that on the northeast corner in that parcel, in that vacant commercial parcel, that there could be no marijuana retail store?
That is correct. So based on the current separation requirements, the five hundred feet from residential, it it would not be allowed because it would encroach in the residential. So under the current lot configuration, they would, there are no retail store would be allowed.
Okay, so the retail store, I was contacted in July by a resident in Outlook. And that resident then was on Outlook next door, and I got a lot of emails. I've had, you know, thirty five emails probably since on various things. And of course, was in contact with Mr. Tinklinburg about what was what what the basic summary was of what could happen and so forth. So a lot occurred since then, but what it says to me is that we need to revisit these rules and regulations. Perhaps. Actually, I think we do. There has been, I am not a prude about this by any stretch. I am not a reprimandous person. I would be curious, though, to get some questions answered that people raised that could help us in the future. And I promised them that I would, because there were well over a hundred comments, hundred and fifty comments on Nextdoor. There were two polls, a poll I had nothing to do with in August of reunion residents that ran about seventy thirty, seventy percent, thirty percent against retail store. And then Outlook has had a poll as well that has been about eighty twenty against a retail store. The the reunion poll, by the way, was specific to a hundred and fourth and Chambers. But I would say from the comments that it that I've received, that it probably applies to all of them. So my questions are this. Speaking of the revenue, where does the revenue go from the marijuana establishments in Commerce City?
Good question, I believe, and I'm gonna, I'll default a little bit, but I believe that part of it goes in the general fund. But I believe that there's a special retail tax on marijuana that is dedicated to a couple of uses. And with that, that's the limit of my knowledge on that one there. Oh, look.
I can answer if that would be helpful. Yes, Miss Tims is correct. Three and a half percent, I believe, would go to general fund under the standard sales and use tax. One percent would go to the two K tax. And then the other special retail sales tax and excise taxes go are dedicated towards public safety generally.
Okay, when you say two K, could you please tell listeners what that is for viewers?
Sure. And I believe twenty twelve or twenty thirteen Commerce City voters approved a one percent sales tax to fund various infrastructure improvements around the city, including the Basin Ridge Rec Center upgrades to the Eagle Point Rec Center, Tower Road widening, and a few parks as well. That is, and that tax continues that one percent sales tax continues to pay for operations of those items and other similar projects.
Thank you. And is there a limit on the number of dispensaries that Commerce City, a limit on anything? Grow houses, dispensaries?
In terms of like a maximum number of any use? Not that I'm aware of. No, that we can, yeah, that we can have only so many.
Right. Okay. And there is, Mr. Tims, a an eligible marijuana properties map that's on the website. Are you familiar with that map?
I am. I looked at that today. Yes.
Yeah, okay. So that eligible marijuana properties map. I know I'm dropping it. Can you see it? Too bright. Well, I don't see any anything in their northern area except on the Yep, except on the eastern, western side, I guess, but it's all industrial. I don't see any C three.
Yeah, yeah, yes, you're correct. And that's, and that's right. Again, our, for two reasons. One is we have those narrow commercial strips that we've talked about. The second is, is that some of our P U Ds up north have have pretty broad zoning, meaning that they allow, you know, a mix of uses. And if they allow residential at all, whether it be single family or multifamily, that automatically takes those properties out of contention. So again, the some of the newer zonings that have been approved over the past year, the the Third Creek Development, the Legato Development, they default to the L D C. But the older ones, which is basically, you know, highway two over to Tower, I'm I'm hard pressed to think of one that does allow it.
Okay, and I am, the P U Ds have always been sort of tricky, and they're kind of like these big buckets for zoning. And I really hope that we can do together better planning so that P U Ds don't mean anything goes. Because when I look at a land use map and I see P U D, I think, well, there's something purposeful. It's a planned unit development. But it's not. It's not planned. So I think it would be important to have that that taken care of. There were a lot of people who who, not a lot, a few, who wanted to know about crime related to any of these stores. And is the chief on? Chief Nichols?
Yes, I'm, I apologize for that. I was having some difficulty finding the button.
Okay, thank you. Chief Nichols, do you have any data on crime related to marijuana retail stores?
I do not have any currently available. I can tell you off the top of my head that what I am familiar with is for the most part, they typically have property-related crimes, burglaries. We have not had, we've had very few violent acts occurred near most of ours. But again, I don't have any data available on hand. I wasn't aware that this question would come up. I can certainly take a look at it in the morning and ship it out to all of council and the, uh, through Mr. Tinklinburg.
Okay, that would be great. I think then that I really don't have any other questions other than to ask you to reiterate, Steve Tims, or Tiffany, that there will not be a marijuana retail store at a hundred and fourth and Chambers on any of the quarters.
So just to clarify, a hundred and twentieth, right? Or are you looking for a hundred? So on a hundred and twentieth, yes. So again, the the zonings on the south side don't allow it. So if if they were to put one there, it would have to come before you all for approval, and you all would have to approve that change. The northwest side will be annexed and zoned, and you all get to approve that zoning designation there. And then the northeast side, the Outlook side, the current, the way the lots configurations are, they do not meet the five hundred foot setback. In addition, we did get clarification or from our legal team that that zoning, it's an also an old zoning. And so if they wanted a retail store there, they would also have to come before you as well. So I can, I can say with a straight faced, honest face, everyday face, that a hundred and twentieth and Chambers is not currently set up or allowed to have any type of retail marijuana store.
Thank you. Then I have a question also for Tiffany on process. Because there was a lot of question, and you mentioned that the petitioner, the retail store presents the neighborhood desires. But how does the neighborhood actually participate? And what can be denied or any of these permits ever denied?
So the the neighborhood gets involved or has an opportunity to get involved, one in the petitioning process. So a petitioning company or a surveying company goes door to door to all of the residents and businesses within the neighborhood boundary, basically asking them if they are in favor or opposed to the that particular business at that at that location. So that's one way to get them involved, the neighborhood involved there. And then, of course, during the public hearing, those, the inhabitants of the neighborhood have a chance to be heard in front of the authority, in front of the marijuana authority to express their thoughts and and feelings and their opinions or their wants or anything when it comes to that application.
Except how is there a minimum number of people who need to be on the petition?
There is not. There's not a minimum number. That's really up to the hearing officer. It's it's at her discretion. Sometimes the sample sizes are, from what I've seen in my experience, the sample sizes are much smaller, just depending on the area and how many inhabitants are in that that radius. Sometimes the sample size is a little bit smaller. Sometimes they go out multiple times trying to get more and more signatures or I guess, a higher count for accuracy. So but it is up, it's up to the hearing officer.
So the more people who could be heard from, the better. And does public opinion, neighborhood opinion, have an impact on whether the permit is is approved or not?
It does. It does. That's definitely a part of it. That's not everything, as I mentioned earlier. The character of the applicant, their qualifications, that plays a role, of course, as well in whether their application will be will be granted as well.
Have any been denied?
Uh, there have been some denied, not in my time here at the city, but I do know that before I was before I became licensing coordinator, there were a couple that were that had been denied.
Okay, so no one who lives within a half mile of a hundred and twentieth and Chambers needs, is getting a notification because there is nothing happening there.
Right, right. So if it's not, if it's not allowed by zoning, then there they, there's not really.
No, it wasn't. It wasn't zoning. It was the 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 strip that Steve was talking about.
Mm hmm, right, so.
That it doesn't accommodate it. So what is the location of the one that has a pending hearing?
The one with a pending hearing, that is Mile High Dabs on Dallas Street.
Okay, I may have other questions, but thank you very much.
Let's clarify, though. I think we have to make sure of one thing. Mr. Tims, I think there was a consideration of subdividing that lot. And if that happens, does that pre still prevent them from putting a retail marijuana in that site at a hundred and twentieth and Chambers? Or is it still too close to the residential?
So on the north, and we're talking about the northeast corner on Outlook subdivision.
Yes.
Uh, you know, any any applicant can propose to subdivide property, obviously, if they meet the minimum standards and furniture requirements, et cetera. But that, but again, just like the properties on the south, that Outlook, it's an old zoning. And if they wanted a retail marijuana store, they would have to apply for a rezoning that would then come before you all for a final decision. So it is not a, it is not, it has been determined that it's not a use by right. I guess, let's put it that way.
Okay, that confirms it. Thank you.
Councilwoman Ellen Thomas.
Yes, thank you. I'm just trying to, clarification, is Dallas Street in the south or is that in the north? I'm not familiar with that area.
I I believe, and Tiffany helped, can help, I believe it's ninety sixth and and Dallas. It's already a multi-tenant industrial building, and there's already several, I think, marijuana facilities there. So it's it's just north. It's not on ninety six proper. It's actually up Dallas a little bit.
Because I just have a concern, I, you know, I was piggybacking on the same things Councilwoman Noble said, but I just have a concern. Eventually, we need to set a limit of these retail stores that are popping up everywhere, especially in the south and in wards two and ward one. I think eventually, you know, this needs to be monitored closely. Because I don't think the residents even hear anything about it. It just all of a sudden pops up somewhere. And I think they do need to be limited. And unfortunately, they seem to be allowed in lower income areas. And, you know, it it appears that, you know, it just makes me wonder, is that why a lot of them are coming to this area and so many are being allowed, especially in the south area? And I think at some point, we need to set a amount that are allowed in this area. So if staff can look into that, um, you know, I think it's a big problem, you know, that they are continuing to just pop up. And then one other, one question I had is who gives the notices to residents or any type of notification, especially in the south, when one is potentially going to be opening? Because like I said, I've never received any notification or anything. So who who determines that and who gets them?
So, um, so our office, the city clerk's office creates the actual posting. It's a large twenty two by twenty eight, I believe, poster that goes actually on the premises. So it's physically there for anyone in the neighborhood neighborhood who passes by or who's near can see that. It's also put in the paper. It's also, like I said, the the petitioning company that does go door to door getting signatures and getting the neighborhoods feedback. That's how they find out about the hearing date as well. Because again, that's set before the petitioning company even goes out, so they have that information on hand as they're going door to door. So then the the inhabitants of the neighborhood are made aware that way. It's posted in the paper. It's on the agenda on the city website and also physically posted in the civic center.
Okay, because that, just one more comment, I, a few more, I think it, we do need to do, you know, some type of better notification, letting the residents know. And then another question, on that northwest corner on the map that you showed in the Brighton area, isn't that Brighton not Commerce City or did Commerce City annex that area in? Because isn't that Brighton?
So, yeah, that particular property is currently or or was in Brighton. And then they were going to de-annex actually out of Brighton and then annex into the city. So it will be coming before you all for a annexation and a zoning at some time.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Hurst.
Yeah, thanks for the presentation and updates. I'm gonna do my best not to get on a soapbox, but this is, again, one of those issues that that bothers me because voters vote in, you know, pretty, pretty handily, a resolution. And then we all turn into NIMBYs. It's not in my backyard, though. We can do this, but just not not anywhere near my house. So it's interesting to see the lack of, you know, that there is precedence in terms of setbacks. I have no problem with setbacks whatsoever. But again, this, you know, with the with the way that our future land use is laid out up north, comes a tale of two cities again, which is quite honestly, it's it's understandable based off the land use, but it also becomes frustrating because you guys said eleven, I know of at least eight dispensaries in the south. And so zero up north, you know, obviously, as soon as you leave Commerce City up north, you can run into them in Denver on Tower Road. But again, it's, you know, we have, we have liquor stores in the north that fit fully into this. And quite honestly, there's been the voter said that this should be legal, have the same legal bearing as an alcohol store or a place that sells cigarettes, all of which, you know, at the you know, at the very least, uh could be looked at as equal hazards, if not greater hazards um to society. And so um to me, it just seems like th- these policies create a very not in my backyard attitude. And so it's not directed at anybody. I understand why land development code is the way it is. I understand the setbacks, but the way that it's worked out in the way that um the map shows, especially when you look at available properties, very much paints that picture, and it's hard to argue that. And so it becomes very frustrating um from the sense of, sure, we'll allow it. But in this one small geographic location, because of the industrial uh historical industrial zoning of this area, that's how this all falls into play. Now, the one we're talking about on Dallas and ninety-six, that's all trucking companies that surround all of that, maybe a couple stone companies um. You know, where they're doing granite countertops, things like that. I know exactly where that's at, but it's also in a like area where there's other businesses doing the same type of production. That seems like generally the right place for this, you know, to to hide it. But again, it becomes frustrating to see um just how the zoning works out because it's so heavily, and in this case, completely uh segregated to the south side of the city. So I'm not suggesting changes. I'm just saying if we're getting more strict, or if we have intentions of looking at this to get more strict. It's very heavily one-sided and it will continue to be one-sided because now going back and taking that away um in the south would be just as as harsh of a of a conversation as uh, you know, expanding it in the north. So um just wanted to voice my opinion on that because it just very much seems like we hear, we hear that it's okay to do and then it's not in my backyard, though, and that just becomes highly frustrating uh to to continue working through those issues.
Councilman Wadiola.
Thank you, Mayor. Um yeah, I got a couple of things, uh Mister Tims. With the one that I asked about, it does come in contact with some houses that are in unincorporated Adams County. Um which to me, some of our residents don't know they live in unincorporated Adams County or Commerce City. Is there a way we could put him off, just any residential within five hundred feet? Or does that need to happen with the collaboration of Adams County?
Well, um good question. So I can tell you that when um that was talked about originally and in our medical marijuana regs, it was, it didn't matter if you were in Thornton or Denver or Adams County, you counted. And what council decided at the time was, they said, well, those cities aren't aren't restricting it if it's Commerce City. So we were still having the externalities um without the benefits. And so that's why council took it out, if that makes sense. But um but sure, I mean, any 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 of those regulations um are are subjective to local control and local standards. And so um that's certainly uh an option for council if they want to go that way.
Okay, thank you. Another thing, um with the taxes. Uh you know, when this passed in the state, it said education. I work in education and it's earmarked. It's not really for anything education other than intervention programs, which is necessary, but um when we talk about public safety, um is that where our SROs are getting paid for from? Sorry?
I I on revenue questions, I am gonna default and punt again. I apologize, but um I am not the not the right one to answer those.
Okay.
Yes, the answer is yes.
Yes, perfect. Um. Okay. And then, you know, we've talked with this council about notifications, the whole city, right? And just on a a different level of, you know, when we're doing the radius, those are the people going to door to door. And I'm not saying go to door to door for the whole city. But, you know, we have a city newspaper, we have a city website, social media. It could we change that to when we have an application that the whole city gets notified that there's another uh dispensary or marijuana um business coming in?
Uh I don't see why we we couldn't do that. If there's another platform that you all suggest, I mean, I don't I don't see why we couldn't look into that.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Mm hmm.
Yeah, and then and the last thing is um building standards. Uh one of the issues that I took um because a number of residents who would drive their kids to Adam City Middle School and also every day um uh responded or uh text me about bam, just one day that building was nice and fluorescent. I mean, it was a weed shop, right? And their kids were asking, it's like, what's that green cross? And there's a beautiful mural on the side. Um how do, how could we change the building standard? So uh I've been in other cities where they're discreet in a sense because people that are going to that know where they're going and what for, for whatever reasons. What, how do we change that or can we change that?
Uh I think we would, I think potentially we could. We'd have to look at the state law and see what the state law says because um, you know, sometimes colors and sometimes designs can be interpreted as signage. And so we just wanna make sure we we take a look at what the state law um says on that. But um potentially um there could be something that could be that could be worked on that.
Perfect, thank you. So, you know, with those four, I think it's time that we review these because our city is a different city from when this passed. And it's growing. Um and I I agree with Councilman Hurst. It's a tale of two cities right now. Um and I get it. I grew up in the core city. It's always been industrial. Um but there's little things that we could do um to make this business be here, and I'm not against them. But also with that new middle school, every day they're gonna pass two dispensaries, every day. Um and so I think we have to, especially the points that I made, the four points that we could change to make this uh a better place. Um the limits, I do believe if this is the city map we're looking, I think limits has to happen because if not, we're gonna have a COFAX Avenue down the whole core side of the city. And and I know folks up north wouldn't want that either, where we say Commerce City and they just see dispensary after dispensary after dispensary. Um so I think this is something hopefully staff could come back and we have a better discussion or uh um in length of how we could change. Um, you know, the Adams County houses residents don't know where they live sometimes. Um, you know, the taxes are going to our SROs, which is great. Uh building standards and notification and then limits because again, um in in the education uh spectrum, when we get a student that has marijuana, it's not swag or in a little plastic bag anymore. It's from a dispensary. That's just bottom line. So um how they get it, we don't ask or whatever. But if we're promoting it more and more, we'll see, start seeing that. So I think hopefully staff could get some direction and um we start looking at those four, uh those three uh points I made to start changing them. Thank you.
Councilmember Madera.
Yeah, I'm not gonna repeat too much of what was said before. I think Councilman Hurst said it best. I mean, it's a tale of two cities and it's like that for a lot of things. I mean, you know, the south generates eighty-five percent of the revenue, yet they only get fifty percent of the benefits. And this is just another case in the long line of, you know, let's have the south pay for the development in the north where every single retail store is located down south. And, you know, what what upsets me is the location that Councilman Wadiola was alluding to. It's right next to a new elementary school. It's within half a mile of my house, and I didn't have a canvasser or a petitioner come and ask me what I thought about it. And it didn't come before council either. So these are the types of things where it's um, you know, I I think it needs to be revisited. It needs to be equal and, you know, it needs to be, if we're gonna have it, needs to be on both sides of the city. And not just uh try to concentrate everything in one part of the city and, you know, because in essence, what you're doing is you're planning what that part of the city is gonna look like. And you, what you put in is what you're gonna get out. And so you know, not being able to put that revenue back into the city where it's being generated. You know, there's SROs, that's great, but twenty-seven J has SROs too that we help pay for. And, you know, it's all coming out of the the same pot of money. But all the negative impacts are happening down south and we're not, you know, completing the the process where we're putting back in what we're taking out. You know, it's just all take, take, take from the south and get to the north and, you know, quite frankly, it it shows and people are getting sick of it. So, you know, we do need to revisit it. Um these things need to come before council. You know, both up north and down south because there's people affected down south too. And you know, there's so many pockets of unincorporated Adams County within the city that, you know, essentially just don't get acknowledged or taken into account. And that's not fair because at the end of the day, they're part of the city too. They have to deal with everything in the city. They're shopping in the city. They're doing everything in the city. They're just not getting any of the services. All those services are going up north, but they're definitely dealing with the the impacts. So, you know, I I would like to see these types of things come before council. And, you know, as far as the process, I heard what the process was. I don't know if I agree that that's what's happening. Because, you know, I, from what I've seen firsthand, living in these neighborhoods is something completely different than what I've been told tonight.
Councilwoman Grimes.
Thank you, Mayor. Um thank you very much for the presentation and all of the information. Really, really helpful. Um definitely because there's some buzz about potential uh retail shops popping up now. Um and I I really just would echo lots of the comments that were already made, so I won't won't belabor any of those points, but just um really liked Councilman uh Wadiola's comments on, you know, can we look at building requirements, what they look like, what a signage look like? Really like that idea. And and would also echo Councilmember Hurst's comments about um you know, the the residents, the citizens have spoken and and it's it's a tough, tricky thing uh when it's something that you don't necessarily want, but it's the will of the people. And so I think we have to look at ways to to accommodate that um in a in a way that makes sense for our community, for our for our neighborhoods. But um also just wanted to make a comment that there are several signs at the corner of one hundred and twentieth and Chambers today that say there's a new uh retail marijuana shop going up. Um however, they're in smaller writing. It's an address and it's in Thornton. Um and so I've gotten several calls today with concerns about um a shop going up there at that corner on the northwest corner there. So just as a heads up, more than anything um that there's, there may be some buzz around that just because there is a sign uh or two or three right there right now.
We we can definitely send neighborhood services out there to to get those. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Steve.
Councilwoman Noble.
Yes, thanks. Thanks a lot. Um I I appreciate this conversation. It's really important. And I do want to clarify, though, that even though there was this overwhelming, it seemed like an overwhelming vote, they were talking about the location specifically because of how busy it is right there, the parking, the traffic, the intersection, and the belief that the homes were closer than five hundred feet. So that played into it. Um people were not talking about in general, nothing in um in the north, but simply that that location alone was inappropriate and then included that reunion pole that I talked about. And I I would point out that there are uh you know, the, I don't know what the dividing in, what is the dividing line between north and south? Certainly, there's far too many in comparison to the south, but then the north hasn't yet built out. So when we're looking at um, for example, all of the industrial that's going in in between um highway two and eighty-five near one hundred and fourth. Many warehouses in there. There's warehouses over at Tower and eighty-eighth that are going in. Um I think that those kinds of industrial properties probably fall into this category and that makes sense as well. It was simply, I see the intersection of one hundred and twentieth and Chambers as a gateway into um North Commerce City. So whatever gets approved in that location, um it would be great if there was some coordination about what might be there, as many people already said um on on social media. They were not happy to see the uh storage unit go in. And we don't want surprises in that area. And I just really appreciate actually residents keeping track of what's going on. I certainly had no clue. And that's part of the problem is that we really don't know what's what's going on. I do wanna reemphasize the notification part of this because I believe um uh Ms. McGraw, you said that there is no minimum number of people for the petition. So it could be one, so we ought to be looking at it then as a percentage of those within a certain distance so that we would have a contact in that fashion. Um rather than leaving it just to one or two people who have awareness and might simply be be friends. Um I, you know, yes, it passed by overwhelming numbers and it's just a matter of location. What are the best locations? And that's what we need to take a look at now, as Councilmember Guardiola said, now that Commerce City is growing out even further.
Councilman Hurst.
Yeah, after hearing everybody's uh comments, I just wanna make sure I clarify my my position. So um my my position's definitely not to hear every one of these cases. Uh I want to have land development codes that we all feel we can trust, as one hundred and twentieth and Chambers showed we can trust. Hey, it's five hundred feet back. Maybe by the skin of our teeth or forty-five feet, sixty feet, something like that. I get it. Um but I I trust that process. If we wanna look at it and further define those, that's great. Um but the not in my backyard comment is not at one hundred and twentieth and Chambers. I guess it could be um looked at that in in some situations. But generalizing PUDs and making, you know, making it um acceptable if it fits, those is kind of the direction I think we should continue going like we did up here up north. You know, if you can meet all of these other demands, then it can qualify. And if it's next to the dump in Legato and has the appropriate setbacks, by all means, that makes sense. Um and so to to me, we don't hear every liquor store case. We don't hear every seven eleven case unless they're asking for zoning changes. We don't hear, you know, where where they might sell cigarettes or things that might be categorized similar to marijuana. But the legality of them is is identical. Um and we're collecting higher taxes on those. Those things have been worked out in the law, and I want us to continue to trust that. I just want us as a council, if we're going to look at these rules, come up with a set of rules that makes sense and we can trust. And I think part of the trust issue is that, what we just talked about. We don't know sometimes, and and now the spreadsheet does a fantastic job um describing what's being considered for review. Uh but if there was, you know, if there was nobody mentioned the the what's currently in process right now, and those all fit inside the land development code rules that we have set today. Uh uh in my opinion, we don't have a a foot to or a leg to stand on in an argument back because that's what fit in our land development code. And it's just like we see on on social media all the time. I wish they'd have put us such and such here, or this type of grocery store, or this type of coffee place, so that we don't pick that. The market picks that. We set parameters and we wanna run, you know, businesses off by setting strict parameters, then that's the position we need to take. And if that's what the council wants, then I'm, then then obviously, if the majority votes that way, I would support it. But we have to understand that once we set land development codes, part of that is so we don't have this process where we're approving, you know, every project that goes through in the city. We we set standards. If they meet those standards, they get approved. And so my suggestion really is And so my suggestion really is, um, you know, I I saw the the setback, um, table that was in our in our packet that was prepared for us. We're stricter than almost every metro on that. I think Fort Collins might have beat us in one or two categories and we'd be, you know, in terms of, uh, setback restrictions. So I think we've taken a pretty strong stance on on our land development code. Uh, that is part of the reason why the the property availability map is the way it is. Um, so just want everybody to understand that, you know, with almost a thirty percent tax on this product, um, and pretty strict regulations when it's compared to the, uh, front range, I I think we're in a fairly decent position to continue to trust our land development code. Where we might need to fine tune it, um, to represent today's current environment, you know, eight, nine, seven, eight years after it was originally passed um, at the state level and six years after it was passed at the city level. I think we should probably take a look at most bills five to ten years in. So, um, I'd support that by all means, but I just wanted to clarify my point is that we can build strong regulations and we have strong regulations that will do this job for us as it did at one hundred and twentieth and Chambers. Uh, just want to make sure that we all trust that process because a lot of work's put into that instead of putting it back onto our calendar to approve individually because then it becomes, um, you know, where we're pinpointing one project for a certain reason and then it very much becomes not in my backyard or I'll allow it over here, but not over here because for whatever reason it might be, you know. And so just want to warn everybody about that and and just make my position clear that I think we have a good process that we might need to find.
And Mayor and members of council, if I can piggyback a little bit off of Councilmember Hearst and a little bit of Councilmember Midair's comments and Tiffany and Mr. Sheeley can correct me if I'm wrong. Um, but the council has appointed Kristen Brown as our liquor authority officer and our marijuana authority officer. So whenever an application is complete and we set a public hearing, that hearing officer appointed by council hears these cases and then makes a determination if those licenses are approved, it conditionally approved or denied. Um, so there are some towns in Colorado that have their municipal court judge as their hearing officer. They have, there are some towns that have their city council that acts as their, uh, authority. So there are different ways to go about it, but this council has appointed a hearing officer to hear those cases and make those determinations, um, for council.
If I can just add to what Dylan said, and previously up until about twenty fifteen Commerce City for both liquor and marijuana used a separate citizen licensing authority for each to make these decisions. These are among the more serious quasi judicial decisions that can be made. Um, so it essentially is a courtroom-like, um, atmosphere, including these are licenses that, um, the city frequently takes action against for noncompliance or violation of city codes and can revoke. Um, so they are treated with the utmost seriousness. Um, and to supplement, I, just to share, I I agree, I'm glad council's taking a look at the regulations. I agree they need to be updated. Our former hearing officer had issued a set of administrative regulations for hearings that I think we should incorporate into the city code to address a number of the issues that council's identifying here and to upgrade as council's discussing about both notice and and, um, the building standards, et cetera, things that we can do, not in the land development code, but in these regulations. I would encourage the council to not take the licensing decisions on themselves uh, because of the extreme burden of that and need for need for speed, for lack of a better term, in some cases. Um, and separating it from political aspects. Your licensing authority is is a municipal judge as well, uh, just so you're aware, is the municipal court judge in Brighton. But when we bring this back, we can bring a lot more information about, um, notice and what the neighborhood needs and desires surveys means from a legal perspective. If you expand that too broadly, you run the risk of, um, allowing people not in a neighborhood to influence the outcome as well. So that is something that has to be done discreetly on an application by application basis. I hope that helps.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Sheeley. And then, uh, uh, I don't have any further comments to add to discussion. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for staff regarding this item? Saying none, we'll move on. The next item on our agenda is the twenty twenty-one budget session. Well, interim city manager Tinklberger, please introduce the presentation.
Sorry, pressed the wrong button there for a minute. We wanted to recap what we had heard previously from council and to make sure that we've captured what council wants in the, uh, budget that will be coming to you at the budget retreat on, uh, September twenty-eight. And so, uh, finance department needs, you know, lead time to incorporate, uh, new projects, new proposals into the budget process in order to give you uh, realistic numbers. And that's why we want to make sure that we have some of this discussion now so that they can incorporate that information and give you accurate numbers at the retreat. So at this point, I will turn it over to Director of Finance, Cheryl Carson, and she can, uh, walk through the first part of the budget presentation.
Thank you, Roger. Good evening, Mayor and members of council. I will start off the presentation and then turn it over to Roger about halfway through. Some of the information that you're seeing tonight is repetitive of what, um, we presented to you on August twenty-fourth, but wanted to continue to have that information in front of you for reference. Dylan, if you'll please advance the slide. Again. Thank you. Just a reminder of the schedule. Tonight, we are, um, here with the second review of the budget and capital projects as it was presented to you on August twenty-fourth. We have the budget retreat scheduled for September twenty-eighth, starting at four P M. Then on October nineteenth, we will ask you to open the public hearing for the regular city budget, the three GIDs and the U R A. That public hearing would remain open until November second. At with that time, we would ask you to close the public hearing and adopt the budget for all of those entities. Next slide, please. This is repetitive from the previous presentation, but I wanted to remind you of our fund balance, policy and reserves. Um, important thing to note is that all expenditures of reserves must be approved by the city council. That happens either at the time of the budget adoption each year or we bring an appropriation to you, asking you to approve use of fund balance for various things throughout the year. That happens by staff and collaboration with finance to prepare the document to bring to city council for consideration. Next slide, please. This slide is a reminder of the various reserves that we have, so we are required to hold the three percent Tabor reserve. And we have a safeguard reserve and operating reserve that is calculated annually by my staff in finance. We update that information each year as part of the financial statement presentation within our general fund. That amount changes based on the amount of the budget approved each annual cycle. So that's why we do that review and update on an annual basis. Next slide, please. When we presented the information from the twenty nineteen CAFR financial statements, general fund showed a total fund balance of eighty-three point four million. This slide breaks down the various levels of that fund balance. The majority of those are set aside for specific purposes and can only be used for those purposes. The amount that is important for your reference is that unassigned amount of thirty-four point three million. Next slide, please. As a reminder, in the twenty twenty budget, it was authorized to use one point three million to balance the twenty twenty budget. In addition to that, ordinance two-two-seven-four for the community assistance and COVID nineteen response of eight hundred thousand was approved, bringing the remaining unassigned fund balance available for our consideration for the twenty twenty-one budget at thirty-two point one million. In terms of the two K portion of fund balance, at the end of twenty nineteen, it was twenty point four million. We authorized a twenty twenty C I P P transfer of six point eight, bringing that remaining balance to thirteen point six. That fund balance can be utilized at the discretion of the city council for various items. Next slide, please. Next one, Dylan, thank you. So this is the document that we refer refer to as our source and use. The top of the document outlines the revenues and the bottom is the uses or the expenses that we anticipate coming out of the general fund. So we're anticipating general fund revenue of just shy of eighty-seven million. We're showing a transfer coming in from the water acquisition fund that is specifically for the debt service payment on the series twenty seventeen B water C O Ps. And then that two K allocation is based on the two K O N M model that city council has adopted. The financial uses shows the various uses for all of the base budgets within the various departments throughout the organization as well as our debt service payments on the twenty seventeen A and twenty seventeen B. And then the bottom shows the various transfers that are approved and authorized each year as part of the budget process. That includes the housing authority, the elected officials retirement fund and our various debt service payments that are due in addition to the amount that is transferred to the U R A for the Derby Catalyst Funds of eighty-three thousand. The uses subtracted from the sources, the impact to the fund balance is eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand that would be available to, um, utilize for other requests. Next slide, please. This is a recap of the base budget variances. This slide has changed slightly throughout the budget process. There are many things that can change as we're having conversations with departments, new items that are brought to our attention, um, or changes that we're notified of. An example of that can be our H R department works with our various benefit vendors and they don't get the information until later in the budget process. So we amend numbers as we're going through the process. So this has changed slightly from what you saw at the meeting on August twenty-fourth. But this is the base budget before considering any of the extra budget requests that departments prepared for consideration. Next slide, please. Next one, Dylan, thank you. So these next few slides are meant to address some of the questions that we heard and I hope that we got them right. So the first slides, um, go over information from the public safety budget. If I remember correctly, Councilwoman Noble had asked why the public safety budget was increasing the way that it did. So we broke down the various departments within the budget and showed you not only the twenty twenty adopted, but the twenty twenty-one proposed. And then you can see the percent change between the various things. The next slide shows you a more narrative explanation and I'll talk about that in a little bit. But you can see that overall, the grand total change for the public safety budget is four percent. Next slide, please, Dylan. Within the five divisions of the public safety department, a majority of the reason for the change within the divisions of the department is we went through a review of all of the salaries and benefits through a module that we call position budgeting. That pulls all the positions in based on the number of payrolls for the year and calculates what the salary is going to be. We identified a problem with that, it wasn't calculating positions correctly. So we did some analysis and work with our software vendor and were able to correct that issue. Based on that correction, some salaries were amended. Whenever you amend salaries, the corresponding benefits for retirement FICA Med automatically adjust based on that change in salary. So that's a good portion of what changed. We also take a look, any year we add a budget request that only has a one-year implication, we have to make sure we remove that amount from the base budget in the next year. So you can see in the support division, we did have to remove some of those one-time adds that were approved for twenty twenty that are not going to have an implication to the twenty twenty-one budget. And then there are various decreases or increases in the allocations from the internal service funds and that is based on the equipment that is being purchased for those various divisions and allocated to those divisions based on the need, uh, for that particular year. Next slide, please. Councilwoman Noble also, um, asked for more information about the requests of the eight hundred and forty-eight thousand. And I believe that, um, initially you were looking at the total amount of the requests, which all of those things added together come to the eight hundred and forty-eight thousand. What, um, the city manager was recommending at the time was two hundred and ninety-one thousand, almost two hundred and ninety-two. You can see which items he preliminarily said yes to and no to, um, when they went through the process of determining, um, and looking at them on a preliminary basis. So, yes, they did ask for eight hundred and forty-eight thousand, but that full eight forty-eight was not approved at this point of the budget process. Next slide, please. This information is, um, meant to provide some data. I know that there was a crest request for crime statistics and a crime report. My understanding and the chief is on, I know he, um, can certainly respond to this, but um, my understanding is some of that information can be found on the city's website in the police department section for the crime report. But this provides some of the information and the activity is that that is happening through the police department, but the activity is tracked by our court as those people are coming through the court system. And we, um, prepared this chart so that you can see the comparison between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. Next slide, please. Councilmember Hearst had asked what the impact was to parks, recreation and golf revenue. So we provided this report, um, January through July of twenty twenty to show you where we were, we are at. Comparatively, for this same time period in twenty nineteen, we were just over seventy-one percent collection for revenue. So you can see there has been a significant impact to the revenue in the parks, recreation and golf areas. Next slide, please. These slides were provided by Parks, Recreation and Golf, and I believe Chad Redden is on the line and can answer some questions if there are specific questions. But they broke down some of the information so you could see twenty nineteen compared to twenty twenty and kind of what the impacts are. So this one, for example, talks about pro shop sales being down because there are fewer guests on site, what is happening with the restaurant based on the reduced seating capacity, et cetera. So I think they did a great job of providing some of the analysis and comparing it to the prior year. Hopefully that will answer the questions that Councilman Hearst asked. But I know that Chad would certainly be willing to address specifics. Next slide. This slide, um, references information and compares twenty nineteen and twenty twenty based on the recreation program and services of the COVID nineteen impacts. And you can see again, they provide, um, some narrative about what what is impacting the programs now compared to last year. One important thing to note is that as they were preparing information for the twenty twenty-one budget, they are anticipating returning to the twenty nineteen service levels as part of the twenty twenty-one programming. Certainly with everything we're presenting to you for consideration in the twenty twenty-one process can and may be still impacted by COVID nineteen as the pandemic continues to unfold. And we would have to make considerations at that time, you know, once we know more what those impacts will be. Next slide, please. This information is specifically about the rec centers and the past information, membership sold and their revenue. So again, you can see pretty significant information here. Um, one item of note is that, um, no payments were taken for memberships from March through June of twenty twenty. And the twenty twenty membership sold does include any memberships that were refunded. Next slide. And here is information on indoor and outdoor rental, uh, restrictions regarding capacity and the social distancing requirements have impacted both of those areas. Again, staff budgeted anticipating returning to the twenty nineteen service levels in twenty twenty. Next slide, please. Councilman Hearst also asked on August twenty-fourth what the city was still offering to employees, wanted to make sure, you know, what the impact we were seeing and how that was going to affect the employees for twenty twenty. So we threw this slide together to point out a few items. In the twenty twenty budget, there is still dollars budgeted for increases along with the corresponding benefits. There is a contribution if anybody picks the, um, high deductible medical plan, the city is contributing to their HSA. Employees have the ability to earn an additional day off if they participate in the wellness survey and two challenges throughout the year. You've heard information presented about the new kazoo employee recognition. You've heard information presented about the new kazoo employee recognition, recognition platform, which has been great. We're seeing a lot of utilization and hope that continues to grow. There are also wellness and safety incentives offered. People can earn points throughout the year and earn gift cards. Throughout the year for various things that they participate in. In addition to that, departments and divisions have continued to budget training dollars within their base budget. So that if there is a specific. Training identified, the departments can make that determination and allow that employee to attend, whether that is in person or virtually in twenty twenty one remains to be seen. But those dollars are still there. In addition to those training dollars budgeted, H R offers a variety of trainings and events throughout the years that. Throughout the year that employees can also take advantage of. And then of course, the employee appreciation. This year we saw that employee appreciation happen differently. Certainly we will continue to monitor that, but there still is money budgeted for some form of employee appreciation next year. Next slide, please. Next one Dylan. So at this time I am going to turn the presentation over to Roger. I will be online and I'm certainly willing to field any questions now if you have them. Or I can certainly answer near the end of the presentation if items come up.
Thank you Cheryl. Next slide Dylan. So again, summarizing the recommendations that we made. There was an initial surplus of eight hundred and twenty eight thousand, nearly five hundred. That was after the other corrections and additions and modifications were made that Cheryl talked about earlier. And then we had recommendations for additions of about two million. And we proposed using hundred and twenty seven thousand from the fleet fund balance. The net impact of those. Enhancements was one point nine million and the impact to the general fund, fund balance then would be just over one million dollars. In addition, proposed planner one and development review engineer manager and a C I P manager. Impact of those, in addition to the previous impact is one and a half million. And then we took two and a half percent reductions from the base budget, which netted us a little over one point one million. Leaving us with an amount to be taken from fund balance of three hundred and seventy two thousand. So you can see that's less than the previous amount that we had talked about previously. Dylan, next slide. Here are the initial enhancement requests that came from the various departments. The total of that was three point four million. Next slide. These are the actual requests that were broken out by the five broad goals that were previously set by city council. Without running through these in detail, next slide Dylan. Just talk about the net impact. Next slide. And again, next slide. Next slide and next slide. Thank you. Let's move on to the next slide. So the reason for the requests for the positions, the planner one and the development review engineer manager. Deal with development review. And we talked previously about the increase in the amount of development activity occurring in Commerce City. You can see from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, single family units, there's been an increase. Of forty percent in terms of number of units proposed, multifamily increased sixty four percent. And non residential in terms of square footage increased by fifty one percent. So the amount of development review just simply continues to grow. It grew from twenty eighteen, it grew in twenty nineteen and it is not slowed down. In fact, it has increased in speed for twenty twenty. Active planning cases, that has grown by twenty eight percent. And most of those are, are many different residential units as well as commercial and industrial. Next slide, please. Then in addition, looking at the, the capital project manager. And what that is meant to do is balance out the workload in the engineers. Division, engineering division within Public Works. We have the problem on both sides basically of not keeping up with development review and also not catching up on our capital projects. In addition, we want to formalize the investigator for background. Background review for new officers and occasional other employees. And this would be a contract service. We have previously contracted for this and that was done on a limited term basis. And we want to formalize that into a standing item. Same thing for investigators for alcohol and marijuana compliance. That allows us to do a better job on compliance and also does not then require a uniformed officer. To be diverted to this activity. In addition, we proposed a property evidence technician. This would be a variable hour employee as well. Provides part time assistance for that increased workload. And then given the new state law that requires processing of digital records, primarily the. Body worn camera data. This would be two full time employees and one would start this year and the following would be, the second one would be in the following year. Next slide. When I say this year, I mean twenty twenty one, the budget we're talking about. Videographer, this is a position that we were going to propose back in March. And then when COVID nineteen pandemic started, we dropped that reappropriation ordinance and, and didn't propose it. But the, the need for it is to increase the amount of video information that goes out to the community. Since most people now communicate via, via video. And so that's to basically get us up to speed in that area. We have proposed delaying that position until twenty twenty one. And then there was discussion about the need for neighborhood inspectors. And currently the community development director and the neighborhood services manager. Are both reviewing their processes and, and how they go about doing their inspection. And aren't ready to recommend it at this time. But believe that they'll have the information that will enable us to assess that for the following year's budget. And in the past, neighborhood, number of neighborhood inspectors was reduced through attrition. And we were able to continue the level of services before through efficiency gains. Next slide, please. Here are some other considerations that I wanted to discuss with you. Spanish is available on Facebook and Twitter. If, if a person signs up. On one of those services with Spanish and selects Spanish as their primary language. Then they have those posts available in Spanish. When we were talking originally, I had off the cuff said, yes, staff can manage, you know, translations. Well, as we continued the discussion, it broadened to all of the council and planning commission meetings. As well as other meetings and that will require outside service and we require additional money. So if, if you want to proceed in that manner, then I would recommend that we add twenty nine thousand four hundred. For covering the council and planning commission meetings and another eight thousand four hundred for other meetings. And that would provide for that simultaneous translation service as the meeting occurs. And so that would appear on Zoom simultaneously as the meeting is occurring. In addition to that, Edcom came back and, and notified us that they're increasing their fees. That happened soon enough that finance was able to incorporate that ten percent increase into the twenty twenty one budget numbers for the police department. Next slide. I also have a question for you about retail attraction. There have been varying levels of concern and comments about retail throughout the year. And recently heard individual comments again about retail attraction. So my question to you is, given the level of service that we had proposed, and I'll run through those slides just to refresh everyone's memory. You know, is that the level that you are satisfied with, or you, do you want us to enhance the effort? Next slide. Next slide. So this is pulled from the presentation that Katie Press provided to you. You know, current conditions are that new mixed use developments are being proposed throughout the city. Most of those contain some commercial, but pretty much all of them are leading with residential development. And the reason for that, the residential development market is very strong. You know, people are, are looking for new homes. Most retail projects in the pipeline prior to COVID nineteen are still moving forward. The pandemic has slowed future retail project interest however. And so again, you know, we need to assess what the impact of that will be. Meanwhile, residential and, and industrial slash distribution interest does remain strong. And that's the reason for the increased workload for development review. Meanwhile, our own resources were affected by COVID nineteen pandemic as well. You know, we had two vacancies occur in the economic development division and those positions were frozen. I just recently authorized those to move forward with recruitment. Next slide. Here's just a quick summary of some of the development that did occur in twenty twenty. Delphinia Suites, Panda Express, Mickey's Express, Dutch Brothers Coffee, Starbucks. Also, there's new tenants at the reunion station, Credit Union and Hair Salon. And we anticipate. Gee's Tacos did open already at reunion station in June. Next slide. So. Katie Press provided information and laid out basically a plan in three phases. One was to provide the retail background information, and that's what she did on July twenty eighth. And then she met with the development review team on August sixth. That XX slipped in there and we didn't catch it in our final, so apologize for that, but that occurred on August sixth. And then the consultant Katie provided retail review comments on proposed developments. Does that as needed. Next slide. So phase two is basically a SWOT analysis. It would be a retail review. And she will be submitting that, that report to us to distribute to council yet this month, later on this month. And then that will be presented to you on October twelve in a study session. And that will evaluate, you know, the national, regional and local trends. As well as look at existing conditions and then where it's appropriate to provide some stakeholder input. And make recommendations on specific development opportunity matches. And you know, part of her job is to identify retailer matches as well. That would be good for placement in the city. And then also identify barriers to new retailers entering our marketplace. And then recommendations for retail recruitment, marketing and materials. Next slide. And phase three would be the implementation, what she called the chase. And that would be to review specific development opportunity matches. As well as identify retailer matches for potential retail placement in Commerce City. Identify barriers to new retailers, excuse me. And then make specific recommendations to, to you and us on public involvement. And then identify type of retail development appropriate for the site whenever we're evaluating a different site. And identify the development horizon for the site. And then reach out directly to retailer matches and initial recruitment. That timeline carries it into twenty twenty one, total of fourteen months. Next slide. So under this scenario. Existing staff would assist Katie and her company. By updating marketing materials as well as supporting the prospect activity generated by Katie. Provide site location assistance, incentive requests and provide concierge services during the development review process. And then prepare appropriate communication and project announces, announcements as needed. So that was what was proposed. Next slide. So option one is to continue those efforts as outlined. Or option two would be to put additional resources towards retail attraction. And so inserted a cost estimate for adding a staff member. For salary and benefits, that would be approximately ninety seven thousand. For marketing materials, projects, twenty four thousand. And then if we wanted to do place making vision setting for, for, you know. What, what should these different places look like and feel like in terms of retail? That consulting service would be approximately twenty thousand dollars. Next slide. So given our budgeting options, next slide Dylan. You know, we have these different options that we outlined at the last meeting. So we have the questions of should we add the cost for, the estimated cost for the Spanish translation? And then the second question is should we add additional retail support service in terms of. Adding an additional staff member to work directly on retail. And then we have the questions of, you know, which balance, balancing options do you want to pursue? Or are you good with the recommendations that I have given to you in terms of the budget, which would. Pull, pull basically three hundred and seventy two thousand from fund balance. And then in addition, whatever amounts you would approve for Spanish translation and additional economic development. Service support. So I'll pause right there for, for a moment and see if there's questions or if you want to talk about those items before we move on.
Councilman Hurst.
Yes, thank you for the presentation, Roger. You know, there's a lot of really good stuff in here. When we start talking about retail, you know, of course I'm concerned we're a little late to the game, especially with the fourteen month process. Just because there's some significant development, development happening in and around us. But I think this is a definitely a good time. One of my first things that I, I kind of feel like might go hand in hand or have some layers to it is. Can some of this work be also simultaneously or kind of work in conjunction with our comprehensive plan? Because one of the things I was really looking at is, you know, and maybe kind of get that value out of doing this work at, at the same time. Cause one of the things I was looking at, asking for in the comprehensive planning is. Take a look at the cost to develop in Commerce City compared to immediate neighbors. And one of the reasons I asked that is because I've heard this several times in the last eighteen months or so that I've been on council. That yeah, when, when the city proposes to you a cost comparative to say Aurora or Brighton or, or Adams County. Which, which really are in our area and we're competing against, whether they're our partners or not, we are competing for businesses at, at times. And they say, yeah, you guys might look like you're the same on paper, but you don't own your water. And they say, yeah, you guys might look like you're the same on paper, but you don't own your water. You don't have control of your water, so their price includes water. Your price doesn't include the tap fees and those, and we come in way higher when we add those in. And so understanding that, and I, and I know that KP and associates are going to identify barriers. But I thought that that's great work for the comprehensive plan because in our comprehensive plan. If we need to shift that strategy or shift the way we are. Working towards, you know, trying to promote business coming to us, we might have to make some moves in the comprehensive plan. That allow for those costs to be equal or at least competitive to our neighbors. You know, we might have a better location, but if it's, you know, the cost is the big driver when it comes down to it. We could be losing out on some of those and people have pointed that out. It wasn't just a small amount that they were, you know, upset about, it was pretty significant investment to increase. And then there was. Just that kind of uneasiness about, well, and the city doesn't control the water, so what if something changes and it becomes, you know, more of a problem? There, there's more hands in the pot, if you will, and so. It seems to me that some of our retail goals. Could, we could get additional value by kind of working with our comprehensive planning team and our retail associates. And getting them to work together so we can not only define those goals well. But make sure that they're included and established in our, in our comprehensive plan moving forward.
Yes, I, I believe that's part of the intent of Katie's work in addition to the comprehensive plan. So I was just looking to see if there was message from Jason Rogers, you know, if he had anything to add along that line, but. That certainly is my intent.
Thank you, interim city manager, to your points and to the further councilman Hearst. As part of the comp plan update, we actually see Katie Press's work as a foundational piece to. I would say the continued efforts that we would be establishing with the economic development strategic plan. The economic development strategic plan will be obviously focusing on a broad swath of sector interest. Particularly looking at, once again, the retention and expansion, business recruitment, development. Attraction strategies, just not of retail, but also of our, I'll say, traditional, commercial kind of office flex and also industrial. And to develop that strategy, so this will be a very formative piece of the comp plan process.
Thank you, appreciate that feedback.
Councilman Wadiola.
Thank you, Mayor. Roger, you said we haven't hired two employees for economic development. What are those titles or what are the positions that you just described?
So one is the. I forget the exact title, but she's a manager. The person who left was, was a manager and specialized in more of the industrial type of retail attraction and retention. And then the other position was entry level position for. Basically support across the line. I don't remember if Michelle is online or available to us to be able to answer a question going into more detail than that. But. So all of them were, were working on, if you can call it the traditional economic development, which is more primary jobs, which is. You know, the industrial side of things, which, you know, quite frankly, has paid our bills for many years. And so that's fairly different than retail attraction. That, that's a subset of economic development that. Is really more specialized and takes a different skill set, if you will. And so if we added a position, I would propose it to be targeted specifically to retail. And focus in that area under Michelle and Katie's direction and guidance, basically.
How many people are in that whole department? Just four?
Just the four in that division, yes.
Okay, is there a way that we could, instead of adding the ninety seven thousand dollars, we could. Change the position to cater to the needs of what we want right now? And then if there's not, I just, I would, I feel like we, we talk about, we've been talking about this for the last three years. And it's, we're kind of throwing more money and more money. And, and I think. Councilman Hearst really hit it where I think a lot of the barriers, we don't have control of. You know, from the retail that, the incentives that we have offered companies to come here, it's not. Stuff that, I mean, we control the incentives, but there's the water. There's all kinds of different things that we have no control over, they asked us for more roofs, we got more roofs. More traffic, we got more traffic. So I think we have to be more creative and we're just throwing more money at it when. It's like stuff that, that the water tap's a huge thing, right? And we've lost a number of businesses because it is expensive. So we could bring in someone for ninety seven thousand dollars and they're going to tell us the same outcome that, well, your water taps are too high. So we don't want to go to Commerce City, we'll go to Brighton. So I would not be in favor of adding a position to, to the ninety seven thousand. I think we could get creative, I think we, we got to think outside the box. I think you have nine folks on this Zoom call that are willing to go and sit down with any company, any retail. With anybody from economic development or yourself to really sell our cities. And we only get a monthly stipend, that's way less than ninety seven thousand dollars a year. So I think, again, we're just throwing, you know, we need this, we need this and more money at it where we, we haven't really thought outside the box. With economic development because we, most of us that have been here three years know a lot of the core problems that we have no control over. So marketing projects, what, what would come in with that twenty four thousand? What is the marketing projects?
So this is Michelle, I'm here, Roger.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and, and so let me, let me address a couple of things that have been said, so. Yeah, typically, the economic development division is, has been for staff members. One of the areas that we've been trying to also increase our services on is helping our entrepreneurs and small businesses. And beefing up the support of the Small Business Resource Center. So we had taken that entry level position and kind of divided it in half and had. That position kind of half devoted to the resource center, half devoted to retail. But what we kind of were figuring out is that when you bring an entry level person in, they just don't have the skill set. To really do the sales and marketing piece in a very effective way. So that really was not working the way that it was set up. And then when she left, you know, we really talked, Brian and Roger and myself about. You know, part of the issue too is we needed somebody that really had the retail contacts. That, you know, Costco's not going to tell me whether they're interested or they're coming in this year or that year. But somebody that already has that relationship built and that, that in with those folks. Would be somebody that we could rely on to kind of open doors for us as we kind of ramp up some of this work. The retail strategy is not a short term strategy, it is a long term strategy. And as Katie talked about in her last session with everybody. You know, even though the rooftops are coming, retail wants them there, they want families in there. So we still have a little ways to go to kind of get the numbers that really get the attention that we're looking for. So, you know, talking to Katie about, okay, what does this look like with the future? Katie's like, I'm not going to be on staff forever, so the idea of, of bringing in a specialized retail person in. Was somebody that could work with Katie while we have her for the fourteenth months. And she could make those introductions and really get a specialized staff person. Because right now we're a little more generalized. So this would be a specialized staff person that just works on those retail relationships over the next fourteen months under Katie. And then takes the program from there. As part of that, one of the things that Katie's probably going to share with us in a couple of weeks when she presents at the study session. Is one of the challenges that Commerce City has is nobody knows our story. And so the place making and the marketing is going through an exercise to where. We kind of know the general story of Commerce City and certainly we can sell that. But this would be an exercise that really starts narrowing in on what the retail story is. And telling that story and having specific marketing materials that. Bring that story to the retailers and to the end users. And so that was kind of the idea behind Roger's three recommended budget enhancements. Does that answer your question, Councilman?
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Michelle, I appreciate that. And, and again, you know, for three years, we've been trying to get, and we have, you know, with the list. But I think we're not at that next level for myself, I don't know how my colleagues feel. But again, we're, we're saying, well, we're going to do this. Is there any way we could do a contract? Contract work, just kind of like what we're doing with the city manager search where if in two years. They leave, we get a free search or we get our money back. Because there's no guarantee here, there's, and that's what I'm having trouble with. And that's what I think our residents are having trouble with that. We've all said that we wanted more and more and more, and there's no guarantee. Now we're going to use ninety seven thousand plus twenty four and twenty. And we, we don't have any guarantees, so. I still would, would not agree with the ninety seven thousand. You know, and I also, and, and again, Roger, you, I thought part of. Either Jenna or John's positions were going to do this, so when we bring commercial or, no?
No, no.
Pro Frank, I thought that's what we, we discussed.
No, the, the position that we set up was to facilitate those projects getting through the process. So, you know, it's basically to. Well, what we do is we identify those projects that need to have priority service. And so they get expedited review in community development, public works. And in the fire district and the water district. We've gotten their agreement to expedite those as well. And so what, what that new position does is basically walks those, those projects through the process. In order to get them, you know, streamlined through quicker. That is not a retail recruitment position at all, doesn't, you know, it's, it's to help it through the process internally.
Okay, no, thank you for that clarification, I appreciate that. Again, so we're just hiring a recruiter that there's no guarantees that they're going to bring this, bring businesses. And I think, I think as a staff, we could be very creative and find ways, since we do know the core. A, a lot of the core issues that we've been encountering, the barriers, we all know them and, and I think we just have to think outside the box. So I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be in favor of that at all, but. For the Spanish, I think if we are committed to. All of our residents, I, I would definitely agree on, that's a small price, I think. To include a population that has not been including for many, many years. So I, I would definitely see how we could bring in the twenty nine thousand and the eight thousand four hundred. For budget considerations. Thank you.
Councilman Madera.
So I just have one question really, in regards to that retail position. Right now, given the circumstances. Are we anticipating being able to attract any retail? Because I mean, right now it seems like retail's struggling and it's almost going the other way. Well. Yes, I, I think there's the, the potential, but again, we need guidance from someone who need, who knows, you know, the, the field. And that, that's Katie's role is to provide us that, that expertise and that guidance. The reason I proposed a position dedicated to this, this, this person would. It's probably not politically correct to call this position this, but this would be the gopher for, for Katie, you know, for the fourteen months. Learning during the process. And the reason I, I proposed a separate position is. It's not going to serve us well to divert from the traditional economic development during this process. Because the traditional economic development is what really pays the bills. You can have, you know, five retail stores. But if you get one in industry in. You know, that one industry is going to more than match five retail stores. And, and so that's why it's so critically important to keep growing our industrial base at the same time. So that was the reason I threw that out, you know, if, if council chooses not to go in that direction, then, you know, so be it. We'll, we'll do the best we can with the resources, resources that we have. And, you know, I guess. The question just becomes, you know, short term versus long term, right? If, you know. Things continue on the path that they're going, this next year is going to be rough. And we might not see any dividends from this position, but if we can, you know, two, three years on the rebound, you know. Pick something up that's worthwhile, then, you know, it would have been worth it. And so in that sense, I'm supportive of the position, I think. It'll maximize the use of consultant that we have and her knowledge and try to bring some of that knowledge in house. That we don't have right now, so I'm supportive of that and I'm supportive of the translation service as well.
Councilwoman Grimes.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, with regards to the, the economic development position, I'm kind of leaning with. Councilman Wadiola here, I'm not sure that that's the best use of a hundred thousand plus dollars. And I was just kind of thinking, you know, you made another comment, Councilman Wadiola. You know, there's nine of us here that can really tell the story of Commerce City. And, you know, Michelle made a comment to, you know, people don't know our story. And how do we get that story out in terms of, you know, retail? And so just personally, anytime I, I'm in an establishment that I frequent or like. I tell people about Commerce City and the opportunities to come here and, and, you know, expand their business and what, what opportunity there is. For them here in Commerce City, and so I was thinking, you know, maybe instead of spending the money in a position. Looking and looking at something more like a, a marketing campaign. So, and one that comes to mind is the Pure Michigan Campaign. For, for a while, we would see commercials all the way out here in Colorado for. Generation of business and tourism in Michigan. And so I was just thinking, you know, maybe it's more useful to invest our dollars in a campaign that promotes us even locally in the metro area. To put our story out there, to tell people why Commerce City is a great place to come. Why it's a great place to open a business or expand a business. And I, you know, I don't know what the numbers look like. How far does a hundred thousand go for something like that? But seems to me that people just don't know we're here sometimes. It's strange, we're a fairly large city in the front range. I was talking to someone in Thornton and they asked me where Commerce City was. You know, it's just kind of, we're kind of hidden over here. And so I'm kind of inclined to think that maybe a marketing strategy in terms of a, you know. Television type, radio type campaign might generate. More leads than a single position might. So I, I would tend to lean with Councilman Wadiola and I don't think I support the, the position for economic development. But certainly we need to do something to generate some more interest and buzz around bringing businesses here. And then on translation services, I'm supportive of, of that addition.
Councilman Hearst.
I don't think I mentioned this, but yes, I think the translation services, especially with the cost that was presented. Is more than doable, I think we can do that, no problem. But. I know you guys will probably be completely sick of me talking about the comprehensive plan, but the only reason I would support. The position. is simply because the, I think it's so important moving forward that we take what we learn in this retail study and we take what we put into the comprehensive plan and have people who are involved in that ready to deliver. Um, so, so I'm not saying let's go spend that money on this position, but what I would like to highlight is I just heard you guys talk through some pretty good ideas that sounded to me like there's a possibility for combination. Um, you know, if we're getting good information from KP and associates, obviously, we need to be able to carry that on. Um, that's one of the concerns that was called out by KP and associates, but we also heard that we would like to postpone a videographer position for a year. And then we heard that maybe a campaign using something like good commercials to tell our story would be a good idea. So the combination of those three where we take uh what we're learning from KP associates, hire a videographer to put out some really good uh storytelling uh opportunities for us. And I don't know that we have to pay for commercial spots, but you can definitely use networking. I mean, things as easily as Facebook and LinkedIn and those types of things to pass around good videos um just to get the word out. And and of course, you can't get um the type of tracking data that you may desire on who got this and what was their response. Um, through just kind of emailing and and LinkedIn and all the, you know, the other opportunities on how to get it out to the business communities. But I think that's what what Councilman Guardiola was talking about. Can we think outside the box to use that and kind of get the best bang for our buck? I think the best bang for our buck is we pay for the next fourteen to eighteen months and it and it pays dividends for the next ten years during our comprehensive plan. That's the obvious end goal, but what's the best way to spend the money that we're talking about? To be able to see it through for the entire comprehensive plan to de- to to deliver on what we're learning on. And I think you guys, your guys' ideas kind of blended a a potential idea for us to consider about um, maybe hiring a videographer, whether that's in-house or an external uh company that that specializes in that type of thing. Um, but those funds can go, you know, um maybe go further if it's not in-house. I don't know, but I think, you know, the combination of those three ideas may be something that I could support. Because uh it's still helping economic development. It's uh that videographer, if we hire him in-house, can do more than just market uh that our city is ready and open for retail. Um, but then, you know, this also gives experience to that individual through our uh processes that we've been talking about, so we can carry this forward beyond our KP and associates contract, beyond our comprehensive plan vendor contract. And they can help us, you know, deliver on those those um the things that we learn and the things that we commit to during the comprehensive plan.
Mayor Pro Tim.
Um, okay, so I am am fully in support of the Spanish speaking translation on all of our meetings. I think that's something that we should have been doing for a long time as a as a, you know, large city with um, you know, a large Hispanic population. So, yeah, I think we definitely need to do that. Um, I I agree with Councilman Guardiola on not uh on not having additional staffing. You know, we had, we used to get these quarterly updates from economic development that I I don't see all that much anymore. And we had had this, you know, we are ready for retail campaign that I thought was uh uh an actually pretty amazing campaign. Um, and then it just kind of died. And I thought it was like gonna be the start of I think it was supposed to be like, we're ready for retail and then we're ready for I I don't remember what, but I remember it was like there was different categories that were coming up and um, and and it seems like that just kind of went away as well. And so I I I agree that I think as as council members for our city, I think that we can tell the story better. There's reasons, we all have different reasons why we campaigned and but we all campaigned for the betterment of our city. We all did it because we wanted to do better for our city. And I think that we ourselves can tell a I think that we can tell a good story if we meet with people um and potential, you know, owners that want to come here. Um, and I do kind of like the idea of having a videographer on on staff. That's something that I've talked about trying to do, you know, like a council corner or something to where once a month we, you know, we do a one-minute video to where they start learning who, where people start learning who their council members are. But we give them an update on something in the city and then it makes us more transparent. It makes us um, it, you know, lets residents know who we are. I mean, it so serves multiple purposes. So I'm not in agreement with the additional staffing person. If it's switched to something of a videographer or something, I would be willing for that. But at this point, I agree with Councilman Guardiola, but I I don't want to put money for additional staffing for you.
Councilwoman Smith.
Um, so I just wanted to say the interpreter, I think, is a great idea. There's a large majority of our population that's been neglected for a long time. So I think it's time to kind of bring them in and talk to them and so that they can have their voices heard as well. And as far as the real retail position, I agree with what Councilman Guardiola, Mayor Pro Tim Frank said. I don't think it's the best use and I'm sorry, Councilmember Grimes, um, the best use of our money. Like getting a videographer, having us tell our story during the campaign, I think that'd be really amazing. Just to make it more personalized, I think.
Councilwoman Noble.
Right now, I think uh the image that a lot of people have of Commerce City is um through the lens of Suncor. And that's gotten all the attention in the media and that's what people know about Commerce City. They really don't know um about all of the neighborhoods of Commerce City from south to north. Um, I do appreciate the idea of place making though. Uh, that's really key. That's one thing, um, you know, where's the there there? And if uh we have a design in mind, whether it's for um Old Town, uh the core city um, or to the north where there's a central area, although I think in a sense um, uh, Oakwood is trying to do that with the reunion area, of course, so that may not be as necessary, but I do think there's a value in place making. Um, completely agree, of course, with the uh translation and um I thank Mayor Hughesman for raising this a few weeks ago, so thank you very much. I am disappointed that there is not um an environmental services manager even uh mentioned or even discussed in the materials as postponed. Uh, can you speak to that, please, Roger?
Yes, we we have the proposal for hiring the environmental consultant in the twenty twenty one budget. And I was going to propose if that is approved for twenty twenty one. I was gonna come back to you with a proposal to initiate that position this year already to look at our internal operations first, so that we have our own house in order before we start looking at, you know, other businesses in the community. So, yes, it's in there. And secondly, I was gonna propose starting it early.
Okay, that's good. Thank you very much. And um I endorse the ideas that everyone has described regarding um how we move forward on economic development, because as I said, right now, the only visual people have is of uh particulates spewing out of some stack at uh Suncor. And there's a lot more to Commerce City than that. It's very beautiful in many, many areas.
So just so I'm clear, when you say endorse, uh are you talking about the videographer position?
Correct.
Okay.
Councilmember Madera.
Yeah, I guess I just want to remind everyone that, you know, everyone's kind of been focusing on telling our story. Well, there's been nine of us on this council since the beginning of time telling our story. And it hasn't yielded any results. So it's not just about the story. You know, we're completely neglecting the business side of it, which is what has been holding us back. You know, it's everything from fees, location, zoning, um, traffic, book count. All these things that go into selecting a location, and especially when you're talking about retail, right? Retail is kind of a a dinosaur these days. You know, business has evolved to something completely different, you know. How many of us order everything on Amazon? You know, just all these different things. And so we're so focused on the retail aspect of stuff. But everything that goes into it is not just the story. You know, because if it was a story, we have a great story, it'd already be here. A lot of it is geographical. You know, we have a tough sell where in between two major metropolitans that have squeezed us by building their retail centers right on our borders. And, you know, you can't expect to have a movie theater a mile away from a movie theater that's in Denver or on the other side in Brighton. And we have challenges with just our zoning in general. I mean, you can't have retail located next to industrial, like where do you see that, you know, in Denver and Colorado uh in this country, right? It's definitely something that's a lot bigger of a picture that has to be thought out in the comprehensive plan. We have to have that. We have to have things zone. And then we have to do all the legwork. So it's not just reaching out and talking to people and, you know, telling them, this is my story. This is why you should come here. It's why am I gonna make you money? Because at the end of the day, that's all business is there to do and all retail is there to do. And so, you know, we're we're getting lost on all this like touchy feely, you know, telling our story, having a videographer. But we know someone who actually know, we need someone who actually knows the business. And we have that right now in our consultant. But as soon as they're gone, so is all that knowledge. And so I think to me, that's what this position represents. We're not gonna have dividends this first year. I mean, to think of any retail coming right now, when you're operating at half capacity and just, you know, there's so many obstacles in the way right now. You know, if you're focused on the next year, yeah, nothing's gonna happen. But it takes time to learn what goes into this. And the fact is, we have the consultant now for the next fifteen months. So if you hire this uh position a year from now, they may have three months with a consultant. And at that point, it may be at the tail end where we're just receiving the report and, you know, everything that we need to do to get that uh that retail. But if you hire them now, they're gonna be working hand in hand. They're gonna be learning what that consultant's looking for. How they think and what they're doing to try to achieve that ultimate goal. And I think that's what this position represents to me is obtaining that knowledge, having that knowledge in-house and attracting retail, even if it's not in the next year or two, but you're gonna be a lot further ahead than if we film some YouTube videos that might get fifty views with a videographer that we're paying half as much as this position. So, you know, I think you get what you pay for. I, you know, I trust staff that they know what our gaps are. And that's why they're recommending this position. And so, you know, I want to enable our staff to be successful. And, you know, we're asking them for this and they're telling us that they need this to get there, then we have to support them. You know, if not, let let's just drop it. Let's stop talking about retail because obviously, we don't want to do what it takes to get there.
Councilmember Madera, can I just ask for clarification from you? You said that uh retail is a bit of a dinosaur. So I'm I'm not uh following, if it's a dinosaur, then why a retail person makes sense in your mind?
So i- in the traditional sense, right, with your brick and mortar, that doesn't exist so much anymore. You know, there's still locations, but the the marketplace has shifted, you know, largely online, even restaurants, right? You order on DoorDash, you have it delivered to your door. So many things are evolving that you know, I think we still need the amenities and and the retail in the community. But if we don't, you know, I think here's what it comes down to is you know, all this development that we're having up north is putting a strain because it it does not uh afford itself. It does not generate the revenue to support itself for police service, for maintenance of roads and sidewalks. And so we need retail or industry. But all I ever hear is not in my backyard. And no, I don't want that. I want this. So eventually, we have to come to terms that we need to build something that can support itself. And the way that we're going right now, we're getting so top-heavy, building these developments that can support themselves. And they're relying on the industry down in the south. So we either need retail or we need, you know, commercial or industry or something that is gonna generate some revenue to support these residences. And so, you know, what what would you rather see? And I think if you would rather see retail, then we have to invest in this because retail is probably the most difficult to get in. Just the economics and the numbers behind it, that is gonna be the most difficult thing to attract. And we're so laser-focused on that's what we want that we're gonna have to put in a lot of work and put in a lot of money to get that. Otherwise, it's gonna be, you know, we can get industry here all day.
Councilwoman Ellen Thomas.
Yes, thank you. I am, you know, just wanted to piggyback along the same lines as Councilman um Guardiola and Councilwoman um Mayor Pearl Tim Frank. I think it's better from the citizen's view because there are sixty thousand plus um residents in Commerce City, Commerce City. And I think um we should let the citizens and the residents of Commerce City um sell Commerce City through storytelling. Just wanted to add that. Thank you.
So interesting discussion back and forth. Um, a lot of good points that have been made. Um, I really think that uh Councilman Madera makes some great points whenever he talks about the investment and moving forward. This is a position that staff has come to us and said, you told us that you would help us in order to be successful in this venture, and this is what we're asking in order to be successful. And now we're sitting here debating whether or not we want to give them what they've asked for. You know, there's been a lot of talk about uh take council out and, you know, use them to sell the story and everything. Well, we've offered that for three years. Those of us that have been here for three years now, we've offered every single year, take us along, take us with, we'll sell the story, we'll help. And my phone has yet to ring once. I've yet to have an email once to say, hey, we're gonna go meet with this restaurant. We're gonna go meet with this business. Will you please come help sell the story? It just hasn't happened. Um, you know, you have the Director of Economic Development who has said it is not her specialty to attract retail and dining. Give me somebody who specializes in that so that I can be more successful in that. And we're sitting here saying, no, we don't think that's a good idea. We don't think that's a good investment. I don't understand where we're coming up with that point of view when you have somebody who is asking you for that tool in order to help deliver what you want. Um, yes, we have a huge imbalance in the revenue generation in this city. Um, you know, we also have a lot of things that we thought we're gonna bring retail and dining to our to our city that never happened. We spent fifty million dollars widening Tar Road with the promise of we put the infrastructure and we're ready to go. We're gonna have dining. We're gonna have retail. This corridor is gonna be great for us. And the only thing I see being built out there are industrial warehouses and houses. You know, and yes, Legato is supposed to have some stuff, but we'll see how successful Legato is in bringing in the retail and the dining that every other development in the northern part of the city has struggled mightily to make sure it happens. Um, we struggle. Uh, we're getting our butt kicked um constantly. You know, you go to downtown Brighton, you see the revitalization that is taking place there and you say, well, how come we're not having revitalization in Derby like we were promised? We have a whole Derby plan that was put together by previous uh city councils that has never been implemented. That sits there, you still go down there and the businesses have not come to Derby. And it's that way everywhere. There is not a single place that you can go other than fast food at ten o'clock on a Friday night to get a meal in Commerce City in the southern part of the city. And the residents are asking us, saying, please bring us restaurants, please bring us opportunities. And you have your economic development department saying, this is what I need to fulfill that request. And we're sitting here saying, no, we don't think that's a good investment. I just don't agree with that. I think that the economic development department has requested this, we should give it to them. Um, we have done everything that we can to, uh, pass ordinances to help out and everything. And, you know, the bottom line is the story just is not being told. I was at the Colorado Economic Forum at Bison Ridge Recreation Center earlier this year. Uh, the late Susan Stanton, uh, introduced me to a, a broker. And, uh, we were discussing restaurant development and said, well, you know, we passed an ordinance that we wouldn't charge development fees. He said, well, that's the first I've heard of that. That should be in every brokerage house in the, in the Denver metro area. They should know about it. So our story is not getting out. So why not give the economic development department, somebody who specializes in retail and dining, give them the tool they're asking for and see how successful it is. If it doesn't work out, well, we need to make other adjustments in that department. So. Um, there were other people that wanted to speak again. Councilman Guardiola, you wanted to talk again?
No, I didn't. I was messing with my hand. I'm good. Thank you though. And just, uh, on the story thing, uh, look at Maria Gonzalez's, what she's doing with the fifty businesses. They're short. And I was also going to say, you know, Mayor Huesman had some impressive videos during the campaign, um, that were really good. Um, so I think, uh, you know, part of it is the story, but, um, yeah, thank you.
And Councilwoman, uh, Noble, you wanted to speak again?
Uh, Mayor Huesman, the, the challenge that I see is that some of the constraints or barriers just don't go away. So how does this resolve anything until we fix those items, the ones that are fixable versus the ones that aren't fixable?
You know, it's great and, uh, hopefully, uh, Ms. Press is able to come to us and tell us what some of those barriers are, you know? Um, I think we can all look at development fees and we can all look at water tap fees and we can all look at those kind of things and say, you know, what impact does this have? Um, you know, the sales tax in Commerce City has an impact as well. You know, why would a business want to open here whenever it costs more to, uh, sell their goods and services than it does to go a mile across the border? And so, you know, half a cent, three quarters of a cent cheaper for each product. You know, customers want to go shop whenever it's going to be cheaper on them. So, you know, we, uh, as it was said in that, uh, economic forum is, you know, you cannot incentivize your way out of a poor regulatory environment. Um, and so hopefully we do get that knowledge that comes out of having that outside consultant. But again, when that outside consultant is done, what groundwork can we put in in order to make sure that their work carries on? To make sure that the, uh, recommendations that they do and to make sure that the contacts we make are carried on and able to be, uh, you know, capitalized on. You know, uh, Mr. Lead always says that this is Commerce City's time. And I truly do believe that it is Commerce City's time, that we have an opportunity to strike and start bringing in a lot of these, um, establishments that we really want in our city. And I reject any notion every time somebody tells me that Commerce City is too green. Because you know what? Brighton has less residents than we do. When you go across the street from I seventy-six, from where Prairie View Center is, you have a lake sitting out there. There's no residents out there. So you can't tell me that we're so green that we can't get the same kind of businesses that Brighton has been able to attract when they have less residents and they have the same challenges that we have with the refuge. Those are excuses that I reject and I will continue to reject every time that they're spewed in my direction.
And I would say only one other thing, which is that I think the timing is what's difficult for me is that we haven't had the report from, uh, Katie Press. And until I hear that report, I can't say yes to this. It just doesn't make sense. We're, we're in this COVID situation right now. Um, retail is dying in many ways. So along with our constraints and our barriers, I need to hear from her before I can say yes to this.
You know, that's, that's true, but you know, if you look at previous councils spent about fourteen million dollars in order to take utilities across D four seventy for the, uh, Third Creek, uh, development project, which is supposed to be mixed use and supposed to have commercial and retail in there. You know, Legato is supposed to have commercial and retail coming up B four seventy. Um, you know, more commercial and retail possibly on the corners of one hundred and twentieth and Chambers. We have the opportunity now to get those developed. But we need to make sure that we have the specialty and the expertise of somebody who can go out and bring those businesses home for us. And as you heard from the Economic Development Director, we don't have that expertise now. So we either make the investment now and set ourselves up for the future, which yes, if we may not get a business next year, it may take another year in order to get a business. This COVID is not going to last forever. We're not talking about a position that starts October first and we're going to, you know, be expecting things to happen before November, January first. We're talking about an exposition that gets brought on, you know, second quarter, third quarter of twenty twenty-one and then can start working and set us up for success in twenty twenty-two. We can't be thinking of twenty twenty right now. We have to be thinking late twenty twenty-one, early twenty twenty-two where that is. And that's where this money is being spent now. It helps us to affect that. Councilman Hearst?
Yeah, to piggyback what, what the mayor was just talking about and it kind of goes hand in hand with, with Council Madera was talking about, um. You know, we, I think I agree that, that retail is in a situation right now. It's not a positive one. But we're still the, the strongest consumer purchasing, you know, society to ever live on earth. We're still going to buy goods. And yes, Amazon and Walmart and these online retailers are absolutely growing like crazy right now. I, I understand all of those things. There are still, there are still goods and services um, that will be required within our community that, that there's retail. So I think what Councilman Madera was saying is when he said it's a dinosaur, I think what he was saying is this position but would be looking to support the adaptation and the changes in the market. And so how do we learn those changes? How do we get in front of those changes? Because when you start to see a new trend in retail, if we don't get in early, then we're talking the same thing. Okay, well, that's a new trend, but they just put one in, you know, at this, on locations on both sides of us or whatever the case may be. Um, again, you know, we had this conversation about spending seven hundred thousand dollars on the comprehensive plan. It's bad in twenty twenty because we just, you know, the money's not, uh, we're not generating the same money through taxes. But if we don't start taking that position now, when we start getting these investments from the federal government, from the state government for this kind of rehabilitation of our economy, um, as we're coming out of, of COVID nineteen and, and whether it's COVID nineteen or any recession, if you're not in position, uh, using comprehensive plans to kind of state your vision and your overall purpose for the next ten years. Um, and I take this experience strictly from the, from the state, you know, state employee perspective, but I think it plays well when we start talking about you know, how MPOs and in the rural areas, TPRs play a role. To have a, to have a, you know, leg to stand on in those conversations at those regional levels, you have to have a comprehensive plan to point to. Here's the project and here's the other three or four or five things that this one project, you know, those, all these ancillary projects depend on that big one. And so same thing when the retail world, from my opinion, is the story is, hey, it's a great place to live. There's more than Suncor. There's more than what you know about it today. I think that's, that's important to have a story. But I think part of that is, is how are we adapting? How are we changing to the environment today? And that's the story I'm looking for, uh, for us to tell on top of, you know, this is a fantastic place to, to raise your family um, and, and have business. But we understand here are the challenges or we understand here are some, um, you know, positional challenges that we currently have, but here's what we're doing to change it. So just as the mayor said, when it was a surprise to that one developer that we had, um, done some work to, to try to drive restaurants in, um, it's the same type of thing. I- i- it's one thing to say we're open for business, but to show how we're adapting with the market um, will be a very important role for, for us to play as we're trying to tell the story of Commerce City. It's tell how we're different than we were five years ago when your organization looked to move here. Or, um, when you got, you know, a three or four-year-old a- assessment from a consultant when you were talking about moving your headquarters or things like that. We're changing. We're trying to change. And we need to be able to communicate that appropriately. Um, and we need to be able to communicate that kind of fittingly to the industry that we're looking for, the industry that we're dealing with. So understand the arguments that this professional, this position brings professionalism to that argument. Um, it's not that we don't have city staff that understand that, but maybe not to the depths. It's not their specialty, not to the depths that we feel is necessary to get the appropriate story out to show that here's what we've learned from our investments. Here's how we're changing. Here's what we see in the future. You should be part of that. Not, that's kind of my vision on what telling a story really is. Because yes, I would love to tell the story about the arsenal. I would love to tell the story about our growth. And, you know, just, just the building of a community. Um, but I think there's other parts to that story that we need to be very clear on to separate where we were and where we're going and what we, what the vision is for the future for us.
Tinklenberg?
Thank you, sir. Um, given that, uh, we are at ten oh one PM and we want to end this meeting by ten thirty, I wanted to offer you a, a possible way out of this, um, and see if, if you're interested in pursuing this, uh, in a different way. You know, this is something that, uh, is hitting you brand new. And, uh, for that I apologize. What I wanted to do is bring up to make sure that, you know, we're doing what council expects. And so would it work for us to set aside, and I'll pick a number, um, hundred thousand, uh, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for something along this line? We plug that number into the budget as a, as a placeholder. And then when we get the report from Katie Press in October, um, at that point, we'll have more information. And then we can have a follow-up conversation with all of you in terms of do you want to then take that money and apply it to this purpose? Or to something else that would accomplish what you want to do in terms of retail attraction? And, and so what that does is it, it basically gives you the resource dedicated to a purpose related to retail attraction. But it doesn't, it doesn't commit you to this particular path that I had laid out for you. And, uh, then you get to decide later on how you would want to have that money applied. Is that a workable solution for tonight?
Does that work for everybody on council? Ed Notts? Great, sounds good. Thanks, sir.
Okay, we will do that. So then, uh, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, I know you have additional slides, but given the fact we are bumping up against our self-imposed time limit, we want to save those for the actual budget presentation on the twenty eighth.
Yeah, what I would ask, uh, there's some more material about the legislative budget. And then, uh, you know, again, we repeated the overview of the capital improvement projects. So unless you want changes made, we will proceed with what was in the material. So again, we're at your direction. Uh, tell us if this looks okay and we can proceed or if you want to, uh, have any changes made.
Did have one question on the overview of twenty twenty requested projects. It says one hundred and twelfth Avenue Widening Chambers, Parkside.
Yes, that would be our final, uh, pay installment payment, uh, for the work that's being done. We, we budgeted it over multiple years. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Anybody on council have any questions on the proposed CIP projects? Seeing none, I guess proceed with what you have there. And legislative budget, did anybody have any questions regarding the legislative budget? Seeing none, please proceed with that and we can review further on the twenty eighth during our budget discussion.
Okay, thank you very much.
Great. Um, thank you for all that information. Um, would recommend everybody take some time to dig in and read a little bit more, make sure that you're, uh, well prepared for the twenty eighth of September when we have that meeting. Um, next on the agenda are reports. Mr. Tinklenberg, would you like to give a report?
Yes, sir, I do. Um, I've had discussion with, uh, several of you, in fact, most of you about the, uh, city manager position. There have been people who have asked if I will be a candidate for the position. And, um, as I told you privately, I will not be a candidate for that position. And my rationale is that, uh, if I were a little bit younger person, I would love to throw my hat in the ring. Uh, I, I love working with Commerce City. There's a challenge, new challenge every day, and, uh, that's very stimulating. But quite frankly, I, uh, hope to retire in about two years. And, uh, so I think, you know, with council making the investment in hiring a search firm to do a search, I think it is, uh, for the best for the community that you find a city manager who can be with you for, uh, quite a number of years. And so I, I think that would be, uh, the best service that I can provide is to support that person for the remaining time that I'm with Commerce City. And then, uh, you know, you have a person that you can work with for, you know, hopefully eight, ten years, however long you want to keep that person around. So, so that's number one. Um, number two is that, uh, you know, you are, you are aware that, uh, Deputy City Manager Smith has, uh, obtained a city manager job in Arizona. And so he will be leaving us, uh, as of October nine. That leaves, uh, a hole in the organization in terms of, uh, taking care of, uh, a lot of different things, uh, on the internal service side as well as dealing with, uh, legislative issues. Um, and so, you know, how, how do we fill that position? And so I looked at all of our internal, uh, department directors and, uh, came to the conclusion that, uh, pulling one of them out of their departments would leave a problem in that department uh, for a variety of reasons. Uh, there are staff vacancies. There are, uh, you know, new, new, uh, second-in commands, if you will, that are, are, uh, new to their position and not in a a good place to be able to step into, uh, an acting or interim role to guide that department. Looked at our external department directors, uh, we have pretty much the same type of situation. The problem with bringing in some from, someone from outside is that, uh, you're introducing a new person into the organization and, uh, that creates issues all by itself. You know, you have to give that person orientation. So the conclusion I came to is to bring back a person who used to work in, uh, Commerce City in a staff position. And, uh, that person is Kathy Blakeman. She was our, uh, human resources director for approximately five years. Uh, retired, uh, for personal reasons to, uh, take care of her husband, but, uh, we're all working remotely and so she can work remotely as well. And, uh, you know, has the past experience. Uh, she's been with, uh, or retired for a little over a year. And so she still, you know, knows all the department directors, uh, pretty well knows our operation and procedures. And, uh, so, um, I've asked her if she would be willing to come back for a limited term appointment. And we discussed, uh, possibly six months. And, uh, she's agreeable to do that. And the reason I selected six months is that would give time for the new city manager to come on board and, uh, you know, assess the organization, uh, assess each of us and decide what kind of, uh, person, uh, he or she needs to bring on board to, to, uh, fill that position permanently. And, uh, it also gives us flexibility if that city manager, you know, does that assessment earlier. Then, uh, the appointment, uh, with Ms. Blakeman would end earlier. If that city manager wanted to keep her around a little longer, we have that flexibility as well. She's willing to, to, uh, join us, uh, under those flexible conditions. So, uh, wanted to let you know that, uh, you know, we will be bringing her on board, uh, starting September twenty eighth. That will give her a couple of weeks of overlap with, uh, Mr. Smith, uh, where they can, uh, you know, he can pass on information to her and, uh, coordinate basically, uh, her coming in for that interim position. So that was my second thing. I reminded you earlier about, uh, the CML meeting, uh, reminder that was sent out regarding Senator Gardner. Uh, that's tomorrow morning at eight thirty. And then also wanted to let you know that the, uh, childcare program has been rolled out and, uh, And then also wanted to let you know that the childcare program has been rolled out and we received two applications as of about 2:00 this morning, or 2:00 this afternoon. And so we anticipate there'll be many more applications coming in, but, you know, it's out there and people are starting to apply. So that's it for my report. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir, for that information, that explanation. Appreciate it. Mr. Schusler?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. As you all know, I'm anticipating to be out for about three weeks starting next, a week from Thursday. I should be at the meeting on Monday unless some event happens that makes babies come early. So please contact me if you need to during that time. Just be aware that I may not be as immediately available. Matt Hader will be the acting city attorney in my absence. And I will be available also through the city manager and through my staff if needed. I'm also not planning to be, nobody asked, but I'm not planning to be a candidate for city manager, but I do love working for Commerce City and serving the community. So just figure, since Roger said it, I wanted to share it too. That's my report for the evening. I will see you all next week.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Tinklinburg, you had an alibi?
I'm sorry, I forgot one item. And one of my department directors reminded me, wanted to ask you for a special meeting on the night of September 29. That's when we meet with 27J. And so this would be after the meeting with the school board, if, if you're willing to have a special meeting. And that would be to discuss that environmental consultant's contract.
Sure, that sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone on council have a report to make? Councilwoman Noble?
Yes. Okay, this is my report. Thank you for 96th paving. Please send a huge heartfelt thank you to the whole city council and anyone else who helped get the 96th Avenue resurfaced. Please let everyone know how life-changing and joyful this is. Everything on the walls doesn't shake or fall off anymore. Our second bedroom is usable. And although the traffic is there, now it is a swoosh of the passing vehicle, not the rocket we had with cracks every eight feet. Wow, just wow. That's from a resident who lives on 96th.
Thank you. Any other council members with a report to make? I will echo the residents' appreciation of getting that repaved. It is much nicer to drive down that road now. So thank you very much. Have a quick report. I, we had a Water Commission meeting last week with the Water Department and a couple of the Board of Directors for the Water Department. Would like to thank the Water Department for hosting that and for putting everything together during the presentation. It was greatly appreciated. Thank you to their board members who participated as well, as well as the members of our staff who helped with the presentation and we're also online. We did talk about fees, water tap fees, and that was a topic of discussion as well as overall ways that we can work together in order to be more attractive for retail and dining. So hopefully we have a partnership that we can start to leverage some new ideas and work together in order to help that out. What else did I have? Think that is about the only thing that I had on my schedule that popped up. Short of the special meeting, want to thank everybody again for participating in the special meeting last week. Was very good. A lot of people have been out watching the video from the meeting and getting a better understanding of how things are for public safety in our community. So greatly appreciate that. Councilman Hearst?
Sorry, I tried to get my hand up before you started talking. Didn't mean to, to come in behind you, but the only thing I was going to kind of reiterate some thank you that I received from some citizens, they wanted to say thank you to the police officers that saved them from being attacked by a loose dog. I know that, that situation's concerning because this one didn't end up in anybody getting bitten luckily. But they sent a message to me, it was their neighbor got chased and one of our patrol group, I think there was two of them in the car, and a second car ended up showing up. They were chasing down a pit bull that was chasing a lady who was running with her dog on 104th. And she obviously was very thankful that that situation was stopped. And I happened to see a shift change at the police station up north as I was coming out of the car wash. And I was like, I'm not going to bug him. All right, I'm going to bug him. So I bugged him, stopped by to say thank you. And it happened to be the officer that, that stopped the dog. So again, just wanted to call that out in public. Thank you for being there and taking the action. You know, we have dogs jump over fences, dig under fences. We seem to be pretty good at letting dogs get out and at least in the north side. And so I appreciate the extra effort there because that could have turned into a bad situation.
Thank you for that. And seeing no other requests to speak, we are adjourned for the evening. Have a great week. We'll see you next week.